So we're going to go ahead and begin. Thank you all for being here and being patient with us. All Things Housing update. This was originally scheduled for Tuesday and we rescheduled for today. So Jerry, would you like to introduce it please?
Good morning. Can you hear me okay? All right. Good morning, everyone. My name is Jerry Lopez. I am the Director of Redevelopment and Economic Opportunity. And just want to say that we are so very excited to be here this morning. The community development side of the department has been doing these All Things Housing work sessions since 2016, and we've been doing them yearly. However, last year, we were not able to hold our work session because of COVID. And so unfortunately, we were diverted to doing a lot of CARES, creation and administration of the program, very important work. But we had to put a lot of these activities on hold. However, we were still able to make some really important inroads over the last year. And we want to talk to you about that today. Before I begin though, I just want to say thank you to all of the staff at Rio and all of our partner departments that helped put this PowerPoint together with a lot of information for you here today. So we have a lot to get to this morning, so I'm going to get started. So our targets for today, what are our goals? We want to do just a quick review of our strategy. Want to talk to you about the housing market, about supply and demand, and just a quick snapshot of where we are, as well as some of the accomplishments that we have completed over, not just the last year, but over the last three years. And then we're going to do a bit of a deeper dive into some of our initiatives, where we would like to receive some guidance to move forward on several items. So we are going to have some really strong conversations so that we can get some guidance on our local assistance plan, which is the plan for the state funding, which you've been hearing a lot about. On our Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, they've made some recommendations, so we want to talk to you about that. Our surplus property process for affordable housing, a community land trust, and about expanding our down payment assistance program. So lots to cover there. Just real brief on our strategy for affordable housing. Several years ago, with our partners, led by our Manatee Chamber of Commerce, we had several focus groups, and I know a lot of you here participated in those, where we talked about what, not just from the county's perspective, but from a community, we can all do together to move forward creating additional affordable housing units. And the key message there is that one size does not fit all, that you really do need an approach that's multifaceted, looking at lots of different perspectives and lots of different sides. So there, we were looking at anywhere from what developers can do, employers, banks, from an innovation standpoint, from our land development code, fees, land, and financial incentives. So there's lots of different perspectives that we can tackle, and we have to tackle it from all of these sides. So we've done a lot of activity on some more than others. Again, this is a very challenging issue that just needs a lot of solutions. So in order to put our initiatives into context, it really helps to understand our housing market and the factors of supply and demand. So I'd like to introduce Jamie Schindwolf, who's our redevelopment coordinator. She was the one who researched a lot of these market items, and she's going to go through our housing snapshot for today. So Jamie.
Good morning. Yes, so we want to frame this conversation, sort of getting away from, you think about affordable housing, you're thinking about buildings and structures. We wanted to sort of frame it as the people who have this need in our community for affordable housing. So you can see here, the average salary for Manatee County government line employees is around $48,000, and the average wage for Manatee County as a whole is closer to $44,000. You can see some examples of the sorts of employees that make around these figures, and I'm sure many of you can think of people that you know who fall into these categories. Wages alone don't tell the whole story. We wanted to present here the percentage of average income that would be needed to rent a two-bedroom unit at fair market rate. These are the top 10 super sectors for Manatee County. We have the most employees in trade, transportation, and utilities, and then goes on down the list. So what stands out the most is that for the average salary for those working in restaurants and other eating places, they would need nearly 70% of their income to afford a two-bedroom unit at fair market rate. The number for that is $1,180 per month. 30% is generally what is considered reasonable or affordable to spend on housing, so this is very significant. If we look at how much the middle can afford, these are the numbers we see. So our area median income, this is the median, not average, is around $76,700 in 2020. For a family of four, that's the number we're looking at, and these numbers were calculated based on a $5,000 down payment. So at 80% of our area median income, the maximum sales price for a home would be $190,520. For those at 120% of our area median income, the maximum sales price is $312,064. Again, 30% is the rule of thumb we're using here. This graph shows the average monthly rents for two-bedroom apartments, and you can see even throughout 2020, those rents were climbing. The average was $1,215 per month. Remember that fair market rate was $1,180, so we are averaging above the fair market rate for housing. For one-bedroom units, which aren't represented by this graph, the average was $1,013, so it's very difficult to find a unit in this community under $1,000 to rent. Looking at homes, you can see the median sales price for a single-family home in 2020 was $345,000. For condos and townhomes, it's less at $225,000. But remember that the maximum sales price that we showed previously for a family that makes 120% of the area median income was $312,064. So you can see the challenges that these numbers represent. It's a lot of numbers, bear with me. These slides, we're going to talk about supply and demand. We're talking about the market, of course. And these numbers come from the Schimberg Center at the University of Florida, which is a clearinghouse for housing affordability data. So putting a bit of a finer point on the demand in our community, you can see that there are an estimated 5,135 households in our community that are spending more than 50% of their income on rent of those who make 30% or less of the area median income. So these are our lowest wage earners that are very houseburdened. And then when we look at those that make greater than 100% of the AMI, the number is less at 216 households. But overall, over half of our renters are considered houseburdened, spending over 30% of their income on housing. For owners, the picture is similar. Only 24.3% of owners are cost-burdened, which is still a decent percent, still a fourth. But you can see again that same pattern, that we have almost 4,000 households that are spending more than 50% of their salary at our lowest income bracket. And we have 689 households at greater than 100% of our area median income that are extremely housing-cost burdened. When we look at the supply of affordable housing, an interesting picture emerges. So we have 14,000-ish renter households at 0% to 30% of the area median income. And we have 7,110 affordable units, which means we obviously have more renter households than affordable units. When we look at units that are not just affordable, but also available for rent, there's only 2,677 estimated units that fall in that category, which means we have 11,539 more renter households than units that are both affordable and available in our community. It's a significant gap. This means that it's likely that these units are being occupied by those in higher income brackets. When we expand that out a bit and look at those making between 0% and 80% of our area median income, the picture is a little different. We have 47,000-ish renter households in this category, and we have more units available than we have households, which is, well, affordable out there, which is great. However, when we look at those that are both affordable and available, we find we still have 5,504 more households than units that are both affordable and available for them to rent, which puts us at a shortage of 21,000 units. The big takeaway, as I said, is that units are being filled by people who could afford more expensive units, but maybe they can't afford much more expensive units. They need a stepping stone, and it shows the need for missing-middle housing. We could go on about this for a really long time, but just a couple suggestions for ways we can sort of address the missing-middle issue is allowing duplexes, triplexes, higher densities where appropriate. This often means allowing some single-family communities to be able to convert to duplexes, which would create smaller units for extra households, but in an incremental way. Of course, smaller units in general. Sarasota County just enacted an interesting affordable housing incentive where they count a multi-family dwelling that is no greater than 750 square feet in certain parts of the county as a half-dwelling unit, so it's sort of a built-in density bonus. And then, of course, ADUs, which we've all been discussing recently. Another thing is decreasing some of the regulatory barriers. I personally, I've had conversations this week with two different affordable housing developers about concerns over our parking ratio for multi-family. And we do have ways to deal with this. If they're doing plan development, they can request specific approval. The board has typically been very amicable to that, with, you know, given the numbers, given the data that shows other comparable complexes that don't have parking issues. And then administratively, they can request a 30% reduction if they have affordable housing designation. And that's great, but it does introduce uncertainty into the process, and developers don't like uncertainty. If they aren't designated affordable, but maybe they have units that will be more attainable, just not traditionally affordable getting our incentives, then they can only get a 10% reduction administratively. So that's just an example of something we might want to look at that would make the process a little easier for people looking to develop these kinds of units.
Thanks, Jamie. So just to wrap up, a lot of the data that we had was in that 2019, 2020 time period. So I just wanted to cover a little bit of the COVID-19 impact on housing. And overall, I was actually in the car, I think it was last week or the week before, I was hearing a news story where they were talking about nationwide that has had a huge impact on housing, that there's been a 30% decrease in inventory and a 15% increase in prices. Because clearly, and we've seen that here in Manatee County. And that's just because while many are able to work from home, they can work anywhere, and our area is very attractive to be able to do that. But the result of that has been, this has increased demand and raised prices right here. So our challenge really is our current residents that are having a more difficult time finding a home or finding a place to rent that they can afford. And as you saw, our tourism, hospitality, and our restaurant industries were the hardest hit. And these are the industries that do have our lowest wages, and also that these wages have not been keeping up with our housing prices. So when we look at the affordable housing issue, it's really, like we said, multiple, where you're looking at both the people, but then also the wages as well. So it really is all tied in together. Of course, our CARES and our Emergency Rental Assistance Program has really helped, but this clearly shows a need for strategies for us to be able to address this segment through our community. So we definitely need to look at balancing all that throughout what we're doing. So just a couple, some really good news items about our accomplishments of what we have done over the last three years. So when we first started, I mentioned with the All Things Housing work session, we did a reset back in 2017, and that's where we created the Livable Manatee Program. And this was a result of talking to our developers about really what were their main pain points in trying to get some additional units. And their answer was impact fees, so that's what we decided to tackle first. For right now, for a single-family home, that's about $18,000 per unit. And for a rental multi-family unit, it's about $10,000 per unit. So here, the program was created to pay 100% of those fees for all of our infill units. For our subdivisions, we pay up to 33% of those units. And in our multi-family, up to 50% of those units, up to $500,000. So that's currently our program. So we've done about 43 homes. We've paid about $644,000 on just those single-family. But this is something that I really wanted to highlight, is that this is a great leverage overall for our community. So it helps in multiple ways, that we were able... So all of these households do have to go out and get a first mortgage, and that totaled about $5.8 million. So that results in about a $10 to one return on our investment for the Livable Manatee Program, and also help to increase our tax base. We have about six land use restrictions that we have done over the last year, and there's about 11 units that are in the pipeline. So just to show you an example, this is on 24th Avenue East. This developer is Bill Manful. This property sold back in 2018 with a sales price of about $159,900. It was sold to a moderate-income household. They did not receive down payment assistance. They were able to afford it without that. And just to give you an example, their mortgage payment is about $1,100. So very affordable when you look at that. So that just goes to show how that's helping. So wanted to cover a lot of our affordable housing developments underway. This is a map that shows both our multi-family and single-family developments that are underway. And we do have some of the developers that have come here today that are in the back of some of these units. So we thank them for their partnership and their support. So on the North County, just wanted to highlight, we have three multi-single-family subdivisions going on. That's Maple Ridge, Luna Lakes, and Cottages of Avignon, and one rental Parish Oaks. And we have Southport Developer here representing Parish Oaks. And for South County, we have three multi-family rental developments underway and one single-family subdivision. And I thought I saw, yeah, we also have some of those developers here as well. And I'll talk a little bit about them. There is one here that we've been working with that is under development, which is right on 14th Street West. And they're in the process of site plan submittal. So you don't see them yet because they haven't gone through all of it, through that whole process. And, but they're looking at 196 units right on 14th Street West. So these are some of our, the rental projects right now that are under construction, actually. The first one, this is HTG Creekside, which is the Oaks at Lakeside. They are just completed, and we actually did a monitoring introductory visit on Friday, and I want to show you some pictures, so I'm going to switch over in a second to that one. We have Sandpiper Place, which is on 26th Street West. And I mentioned Southport Financial for Parish Oaks. So those are the ones that are under construction right now, and those are rental. 96 units, 92 units, and 128 units, and they're Phase 1 and 48 in Phase 2, so some good amounts of rental units. All three of these are under the low-income housing tax credit, so they're going to be serving that lower rung of the need that Jamie had talked about. And then we have some others in the different stages, which I'll talk a little bit more about that, too. So this is Oaks at Lakeside. And I'm just going to switch over real quick to some pictures, and I'll provide this over to the clerk. But we went over to them on Friday just to introduce ourselves, say hi, and were able to get a really quick tour. So this is just their sign, this is their clubhouse, this is the playground. What we found out is that most, so they're about 96 units. Most of the families moving in are families. So that was really important, to have playground and sidewalks. They have a pool. This is what the units outside look like. But what I really wanted to show you was part of the amenities on the inside, that these are extremely high-quality units. This was our favorite, was the kitchen. I mean, they had some granite countertops, and here you have our lovely staff posing in front of our kitchen, because we all really liked it. And, but these tax credit projects are so very important because they serve a wide range of our community needs. When we spoke to their property manager, they had about 10 Section 8 vouchers that they were already working on, so that's one of the needs that we saw, that there aren't a lot of landlords out there that are taking the vouchers. They also are serving seniors, and they're serving the seniors at the very low end of the wage earner side, on the 30% of the area median income and below. So the rent for that one-bedroom apartment for those seniors would be about $334. So serving a huge need. I mentioned it's mostly families, but they do have set-asides at the different kind of income brackets. I did give everyone of you at your desk, this is the new income chart. So for those that are at least new to our affordable housing world and the way we speak, we do speak sometimes with a lot of these acronyms. So everything is all referenced about income levels, depending on which bracket you're in, about who it is that we can serve. And so just wanted to provide that so that you can see, it depends on your household size, and it depends on your income level, and it also matches up to the maximum fair market rent that you can charge. So that's really our bible that's provided to us by the state of Florida. So just... Never really did, okay. Sorry about that. I realize I never did the PowerPoint to back up. So real briefly then, our next project is Sandpiper, and you've heard me talk about this one. This is just their site plan. This is on 26th Street West in Bradenton, just south of Cortez. This is their, what that facade looks like, and they are under, they are under construction. So we're going to be looking forward to seeing this one open up and have more, more units available. The Oaks at Lakeside that I just referenced, they already have a waiting list, and they're still just moving people in right now because they just received their certificate of occupancy not too long ago. The next project I wanted to talk to you about is Car Landing. We have Jake Stowers here, the developer. We've been working with Jake for over the last, like, two, almost three years. This just goes to show you just how long it takes to put these projects together. And this is just a great example because Chaff, who's the name of the development company, is really interested in mixed income development. So this is going to be a true mixed income, where you have lots of different categories of income, where you have market rate as well as affordable units. So this is what their site plan looks like. This is one of the first projects that did go through the rezoning for, for just a straight rezone to get for affordable housing. Right now, unfortunately, they hit a little bit of a snag, where as part of their process, they have some brownfields issues. So we just had a call with them yesterday, and we're kind of working, working with them through that to make sure that we can keep these projects moving. And then for our single-family, we have four that are underway. You've been hearing a lot of our Polling Gardens and our Habitat for Humanity. You'll be seeing several more of those as we bring forward several more agreements as well to keep that project going. And the other three are all in the North County, north of the River area. And then just real briefly to close, just to real quick on our housing programs, all of these is where we use our federal and our state dollars to be able to do these programs, which is our down payment assistance. And again, mainly with our SHIP program, with our housing program. And again, lots of private funds leveraged. Here we have 6.7, and a great return on our investment. And under our rehabilitation and replacement, here we do use our SHIP as well as our HUD. We've done about 37 homes in the last three years. So a key program to help with our affordable housing, as I mentioned, is our state SHIP program. So I'm going to turn it over to Denise, our housing... Are you going to stay there? You're coming up? Okay, she's going to come up. Our Housing and Community Development Division Manager, and she's going to tackle this section. Denise?
Good morning, everyone. Denise Thomas with Rio, and I want to talk to you just for a moment regarding the Local Housing Assistance Plan. Manatee County has been a recipient of the State Housing Initiative Partnership, which is called SHIP, more formally known as that, since 1992. And every three years, we're required to develop and submit a three-year Local Housing Assistance Plan, or AHEP, as we often refer to it, to identify strategies and activities we would implement based on funding allocation received through legislative appropriation on an annual basis. This year consummates the last year of our 2018-2021 Local Housing Assistance Plan, and we are now required to submit a new three-year plan in order to be eligible for SHIP allocation this year forward. And the allocation comes through legislative action. And right now, my understanding is the House and the Senate have approved a budget, and it's now with the governor to sign also. We hope to be able to receive funding this year. I want you to please note that the three-year Local Housing Assistance Plan is the framework from which we look to implement activities within our communities based on the funding availability. Every September, Steph brings before the board the SHIP annual report that captures the accomplishments that we have made throughout the closeout year and the commitment of funding activities that we have and still working on for the balance of the year. With SHIP funding, we have two years to commit the funds and three years to expend the funds. So at any time, we're working on a three-year rotation in every given year. Statutorily, we are required to ensure that 65% of the SHIP allocation that we receive go toward homeownership activities, and that 75% serve construction activity, and that's 75% of the total allocation. Also, we are required that 30% of the total allocation serve very low, and another 30% serve low income. We provided you the income levels, very low is 50%, low is 80%. So at any time, we have to watch those percentages and ensure that we have activities to accomplish those goals. Under the current AHEP that we have, the current strategies that we have is housing rehab, where we are able to accomplish the statutory percentages of homeownership and construction. We have housing replacement, where we also are able to accomplish homeownership and construction. We have down payment assistance that we are able to accomplish homeownership. We can accomplish construction if we have repairs touch it, or if it's new construction. And then we do have the disaster assistance, which in case of an executive order that we have a disaster, we can divert funds to address those needs. And then we also have a strategy for rental development assistance, which is considered a construction activity. The 2021-2024 Local Housing Assistance Plan is due to the state this year by May 2nd, and will be coming before the board on April 20th for approval. But through this PowerPoint presentation, we will be asking for your guidance along the way. As part of developing the Local Housing Assistance Plan for this year, we were required to do outreach within... to do outreach within the community. We're asked to go to our partners and get some feedback. And some of the feedback that we received from some of our partners within our community that they're being impacted with, and this is just coming from the lenders and nonprofits, is the rising cost of housing. Existing housing that is there that may be within the price range is in need of repair. There's a low inventory for the affordable market because we also have individuals who are above those income levels buying the lower-cost units. So that takes it out of the inventory. And then there still is an income barrier to getting individuals approved at the higher prices, even though prices are rising, wages are not. And then new housing is now requiring homeowner association fee, which is another impact on the increase in house payments. Also, we are told that investors are now buying up a lot of the affordable properties, so it's not as much as available. One of their recommendations was an increase in the sales price for very low to $180,000, for low to $200,000, and moderate to $225,000 to meet market demands. And we took that into consideration and we are going to have a recommendation or guidance for the board to give us direction. Responses from, additional responses from our lender and nonprofit community was that maybe we need to think about reaching out to a nonprofit, a larger nonprofit, to acquire and rehab housing and also to require developers to include affordable housing within their communities. They also recommended that sellers wanting highest and best offers that go beyond the bar of preapproval, that we need to look at that as an impact to individuals being able to attain housing. And they also recommended that we have more multifamily homes that are needed in desirable neighborhoods. And as you saw, we already have quite a few projects underway. However, it is a process and it takes time to get there. They also recommended that we need a need for impact fee incentives to continue because that is making an impact within our community and also consideration of maybe a purchase rehab Jerry wanted me to just mention a little bit, on the purchase rehab option is where individual can go in and purchase a houses in need of repairs. And once the closing occur, we can provide from our rehab strategy funds to help rehab the home. That way they are able to get a house within a reasonable price, but at the same time, we can make it meet code-related requirements. From our builder community, these are some of the challenges that they are seeing. And I know you already heard it out in the community, supply and demand. There's an increased demand in construction materials, limited supply creating delays in delivery, competing with large home builders. Even though COVID may have stopped many things, it did not stop the building market. It did not stop the increase in housing. And now we have substantial increase in costs. They also recommended, they also said there's a substantial increase in the cost of materials such as lumber has doubled. There is a 15% increase on roofing shingles and 15 to 20% increase on windows and doors, which means they cannot build the same house they built over a year ago today. And as you know, with most housing, whatever costs the building occurs is passed on to the buyer. So with that said, one of the things that we want guidance from the board today is regarding the new local housing assistance plan and possibly the existing one, to look at an increase in sales price maximums for very low, from $160,000, which it currently is, to raising it to $180,000, which is a 12.5% increase. For low income, increasing it from $176 to $200, which is a 13.64% increase. And for moderate income, increasing it from $192 to $225, which is a 17% increase. Now, understanding that if sales price increase and wages are not increasing, we have to cover the gap. So the other recommendation is within our down payment assistance program to look at increasing those maximums to help offset some of that impact that is going to come. And for very low, right now we're at 40, we will have to increase it to 45. Low is now at 35, we want to increase it to 40. And moderate is 25 and we want to increase it to 30. Also, within the ship program, we also use our funds to help to bring houses that are in dilapidated condition up to standard, code-related standard. And when it's beyond rehab, where we can do repairs, we actually work with the homeowner to demolish and rebuild a new home. It's all about having safe and decent housing. So with the rising cost of materials, we are recommending that the rehab go from $70,000 to $80,000 to kind of offset that increased cost. And for the replacement, going from $160,000 to $180,000. It's all about trying to get individuals into housing that they can live in, that can be decent and safe, and that can be something that they can stay in for a continual period of time. And the only way we're going to do that is to make the program work to their benefit, where they can afford to buy housing, they can remain in their housing, but also have those code-related repairs done so that they can live in health and safety. So at this time, we want to ask for the board's guidance on these recommended levels, an increase in order to proceed and finalize the new local housing assistance plan. So I'd like to ask the chair to open it up for any discussion. For the local housing assistance plan, we were going to take it in sections because we got a lot to cover.
I heard on social media, and they ask us to hold the mics close to us guys when we do talk, that going to Home Depot the other day, they were shocked at how expensive wood is now. And then I was talking to a person that builds homes the other day, who stopped on the side of the road and asked me to hold so he could take pictures because he found blocks, masonry blocks that they're having a hard time getting to build homes. And this wasn't just any, this wasn't a small builder. And then I guess the number called was up north to get blocks to build houses locally here, that's how bad it is. So I just don't even see those monies. I mean, I just still don't see how you can afford a home right now. It's just ridiculous. It really is.
What we're hearing is when COVID hit, a lot of companies had to lay off employees and then the demand came and they couldn't keep up with the volume. So now the need is greater than they can supply and they haven't been able to revamp to get up to that level. So now those things are becoming priceless.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wasn't quite sure how to get on the board, so I was just, okay, just sort of waving my hands. Excellent presentation and thank you very much. Just sort of going to opine on the housing situation and industry as a whole, the market as a whole right now. Prices are absolutely sky-high. And we found ourselves in this situation before. It was actually when I first got into the real estate industry when I was much younger and I learned quite a bit from then to now. Oftentimes, we find ourselves in these situations and we look back and we realize that government isn't necessarily the solution. Oftentimes, government is the problem and government is what led us to this situation, whether it's overly burdensome regulations, overly burdensome taxes. You know, I hear a lot of people, and when I was campaigning, saying that we have too many houses and there's too many people in Manatee County and we need to slow down the construction industry. Looking at your presentation, one of the things you pointed out is that the construction, people working in the construction industry actually make at or above the average wage in Manatee County and 30%, you have 30% of their income going towards housing, which is really the target, right? So you have an industry that's creating good jobs, particularly in my district, for people that they can afford to raise their family. And that same industry is creating, increasing the supply, which is, you know, learn in elementary school, that's the bottom line here. It's a supply and demand issue. The reason housing is so high is because we don't have enough of it. And of course, the solution, a lot of people may not like to hear it, but the solution is not to stop building houses, we need more. And you know, so hopefully some people will stop going after that particular industry because they're creating great jobs for people who live here. And in addition to that, they're increasing the supply of housing, which is something that we need. One thing I would like to look at is this county and as well as cities and probably the school board. Government owns a lot of property around town. And could we identify government-owned property that might fit the profile for an affordable housing or workforce housing project? Commissioner Cruz and I both have expressed interest in sort of purging property that this county owns that we're not utilizing, sort of purging that from the role for reasons of, you know, everything from liability to the holding costs. So that's something I think that I would like staff to look at and probably bring back to the board. And that would actually include, how did I write this out here? Like see a list of, a separate list of government-owned property or county-owned property that is non-conforming and that staff could look at that property and see if there's a possibility of creating variances for those properties to make that property conforming for affordable housing, you know, for developers, for builders of affordable housing. I do not want the county to get into the business of building housing projects, that's not our business. But obviously, the only way you're going to get private industry to buy in is if you make it profitable because they're in the business of making money. So you know, is there a way that we could look at those, get us a list of property that you think fits the bill, that we could probably get off of the role and get into the hands of the private sector so that they could turn into workforce housing? That's one thing I'd like us to look at. But all in all, when, you know, I looked at some other things that were brought up, which was acquire and rehab housing. That's, in my opinion, not the role of government. I personally don't want to see us picking up any properties and rehabbing them, nor do I want to start requiring, you start requiring owners to rehab things, obviously you don't want, you know, slum lords, but you know, you get into, that's the problem is you get into that, what, you know, our opinion of what is quality and what is good enough and, you know, what I would live in might be different than what you would live in or what Vanessa's in Lakewood Ranch, so you know, her standards I'm sure are much higher than mine. But you know, but yeah, everybody has, you know, sort of different standards and different qualities what they're willing to live in. Some people live in a shack on Annemarie Island, you know, but it's right on the beach, the thing's worth a million bucks, right? And even, see Commissioner Whitmore lives out there, she knows. So anyway, everybody has sort of different standards. There are even other things that have to be taken into consideration while we of course are filled with good intentions and we want everyone to have a high standard of living and a good quality of life. There are life choices that folks make that sometimes put them in certain situations where they have to sort of start over and start working their way back up. And I don't want to live in a building that's in disrepair, but sometimes people end up in a situation where that's all they can afford. And if we eliminate every single, you know, building in disrepair and we say everybody has to come up to this level or this quality or this standard that meets our needs, sometimes you end up putting folks on the street and then they go from, you know, what we consider poor housing or bad housing to no housing. And so I don't want to eliminate, you know, I don't want to get into that standard-setting mode either. I think that that's government stepping into an arena that it should not. There are safety concerns, of course, you don't want people living in unsafe housing. But when you start setting standards of rehabbing things to, you know, what we think is quality, you know, I think we should be very careful about that. And you were right when you said, whatever costs are incurred by the builder, we pass on to the buyer. It's 100% correct. And I've cited that multiple times when we discuss taxes. Impact fees going up by like 40% was proposed, that's going to get passed on to buyers. And whether you're building, you know, a house in Lakewood Ranch or you're building, you know, apartment complex on 26th Street, you're going to pay impact fees and you're going to pay those taxes. And so if those go up, so does the cost of that house. And here we are, we're working against ourselves. So I think that's something to consider as well. And I'm not against the down payment assistance program, but I think we should be very careful as we get into sort of making adjustments and changes, upgrades, whatever term we want to use to that. Because remember, government involvement in the early 2000s led to unqualified buyers being approved for homes that they could not afford. And that was government involvement, there's no two ways around that. And that eventually, that house of cards turned into the Great Recession and it came crashing down and you had large numbers of people in the construction trade. And I was a Realtor, I certainly suffered from it. But you had lots of industries that ended up suffering during the Great Recession, mass unemployment. People weren't able to provide with themselves, they lost the houses that, you know, were so generously, they were so generously helped into. So the road to hell oftentimes is paved with good intentions and that was the case then. So I just think that we should be very careful about how involved this government is in that we do have a free-market society and it has worked, it has freed more people from poverty over the centuries than really any other form of government. And so I just hate for us to start treading on that and allow government to grow beyond what it should. That said, if there's anything that government can do by increasing density, you know, I am open to some of the things that you discussed. I like the idea of increasing density. I like the idea of reviewing regulations and seeing where we can cut back to help make things more affordable. Parking spaces are something that Commissioner Cruz has been talking about for a very long time, reducing the number of parking spaces. But that of course only works in certain parts of town, right? Where you have connectivity, right? You have to have connectivity and you have to be close to some, to a grocery store and some essentials. But in those areas, I think we should, we should look at that and I think we should get a little more aggressive about it. We've talked about it on the campaign trail and this is probably the second time we've talked about it in a workshop or a meeting, but it's probably time to move forward with some action and have staff bring us some proposals as to, you know, what sort of changes we can make when it comes to regulations. Your job is to, is to come here and talk. I'm not knocking you for bringing this to us, but I'm just saying to the board, it is probably time we try to give staff some direction as to what we can do to try to, you know, alleviate some of the burdens that government puts on that industry. Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, if I could share just a few points of clarification. I was here during the recession and I was working the ship program. One thing I come to realize is that we have very few foreclosures. And it's because we provided the level of assistance that we did and people were able to maintain their housing. And we are talking about those 80% and 120%. It was mostly in the higher end that a lot of the foreclosure, where people were upside down. So they weren't able to, they didn't want to stay in that house and they just walked away.
Yeah, I know what you're saying.
Another point I want to share for clarification, on our rehab program, it is existing homeowners that we are serving and a lot of them are elderly and they need their repairs, they need the modification and a lot of them don't have the wherewithal to do it. So that what we find out...
Well, it's showing speakers are off out here, but I am seeing volume.
Can you hear me now? Okay, all right, okay. Okay, I'm sorry. Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am. With many of the rehab, what we're finding is a lot of elderly are coming forward because their spouses may have passed or children are not... And they have some issues that are affecting their health. So we are able to be able to go in and bring their house in there, they are able to live longer, they are able to survive longer. And with regard to the acquire and rehab, we were looking for a nonprofit that could go out and acquire, because when government go out, usually the price increase. But using a nonprofit as a vehicle, they can go out and acquire and rehab and either put it for rental or resale to those that we need to serve. Those are just some avenues or suggestions that came forward to look at because the one thing that we're being impacted with, those who need it the most have no other choice or nowhere they can go except to us. And that's why we are trying to provide that service. And the other thought is, we have to spend the money in order to get more money. And the state gives you a certain period of time to get the money out to serve those that need it. And if we don't utilize programs to do that, the program won't be here. But we have done a good job. We love to spend the money and we love to serve our constituents and we've done a good job of it since I've been here that I know of. And most of the individuals that derive it, it's almost like a life-changing event for them. It's a new beginning. Thank you.
Sure, and thank you. I appreciate the clarification. Sure, and thank you, I appreciate the clarification and you're doing a fantastic job. I do, it pains me to hear things like, we have to spend the money so we can get more sometimes because I, I don't always like government just, you know, flying through money as quickly as we can, feeling like we have to. But anyway, it was a good clarifications and I'm appreciative of it. Thank you.
Yes, one thing I'd like to clarify is that this is just one segment of our full affordable housing kind of presentation for today. What I, what we wanted to try is that after each segment, we can just go through and just get guidance on that particular one. There's, we have another section on surplus properties and a couple others that are coming in. So we want to make sure that we're taking this in segments and getting guidance. But this particular one is our guidelines to be able to spend the ship dollars that are coming in from the state. And the one thing I did want to clarify on this is that these are loans. So this is something that, I don't know if you can hear me or not, yeah, okay, that these are loans. So we're just helping these homeowners get into the homes. And so this is just helping to be able to serve a bit wider section, especially with the market. But once they sell, we get that money back in terms of that program income and then we're able to serve other families. So I did want to make clarification on our down payment as well as rehab and replacement, that it is a loan. However, it's zero interest, it's zero payment, so that, so it's not a burden to the family and they just pay it once they sell. They're able to get the benefit of the home, but then we get that money back and then we're able to put it back into the community. So I did want to make those clarifications.
Thank you, and I appreciate the clarification. My issue is not whether or not, you know, it's a feel-good story or not, it's simply whether or not it's the proper role of government, you know, are we a lender or are we a government? So anyway, thank you very much.
All right, I'm next on the board. In reference to what you just said, you know, I'd love to talk about impact fees, but is now the time or would it be in another segment? Yes. Another segment? Yes. Okay. I think it's very important that we talk about those today. All right, I'll let it go. Reggie?
Then in that case.
Because I'm actually thinking, oh, some of my concerns, as far as him, Kevin talking about the role of government, where we are with this particular program right here, it obviously impacts people that are underserved and underprivileged. And a lot of times this goes to elderly people with fixed incomes. And this is something, again, you know, where government from a pie gives us an opportunity to make sure we can impact our community. So I wouldn't want to lose focus on that. I want to take advantage of that opportunity and continue to impact those individuals that are of need and try to make a difference because that definitely impacts the quality of life in our, in our county. So I hear what you're saying, but also hear and see some of the things and the benefits of the programs. And when she's saying, well, we got to spend the money, that's an opportunity for us to take, take money and then impact people in our county that are of need. So obviously, you know, I kind of look at it from a different focus lens when I, you know, ride around my district and see there's an opportunity to impact this family or is it an opportunity to impact this elderly lady over here. So I kind of look at it from a different focus lens, to be honest with you, so. But you act, I didn't raise my hand, but I can give it to you. I've been writing notes and stuff like.
And I just want to respond to what you just said. I, I don't think anyone on this board wants to take anything away from, from this. I mean, we want to help everyone we can. And I think that Commissioner Van Austin Bridge was not hinting at not doing so, but we need to figure out what's the best way to be able to go about it. And, you know, some people can probably do this better than we can. So I think that's what he was talking about. So anyway, Commissioner Cruz.
I'm going to keep this short because I got a page of stuff to talk about, but I'd rather, if we're just talking about a few specific things, I think we should just go through it because I don't even know where my stuff fits in. I mean, I got community land trusts, I got impact fees, I got density bonuses, that's my point. So I'll just quickly touch a couple of questions and a comment and then I'll save the rest for later. One, you showed the 30% calculations relative to rent and mortgage early on and the thing I didn't want to interrupt, were you doing that solely based on rent? Is that how you calculated the minimum or the maximum rents and maximum mortgage payments based on 30% of income solely based on the rent or mortgage payment?
As in, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, as in not utilities and such?
Correct. I mean, there's different ways of, that people look at it, you know, the, obviously the easy way is just say 30% of income, that's what your rent, but, but a lot of calculations, well, a minimum include taxes and insurance. Is it inclusive of 30% supposed to be your total housing cost to a family, not just the rent you pay? Because, you know, I can game that system by charging you virtually nothing for rent and then charging you a $500 rental insurance payment and just to kind of get over it if that's the calculation being used. Some people can include water and utilities in rent and then it makes the rent look higher, other people take it out and rent looks lower. I was curious how we calculate it because I've seen it where it's all-inclusive, what's the total cost for a family to live in a house or a unit? Or I've seen it with just taxes and insurance, so the bigger fixed, or I've just seen with rent. So I was curious how we calculated it.
Uh, yeah, so Jamie Schindl, for the record, these are just the rent numbers, not counting in utilities, insurance, et cetera.
Is that how we do it internally for like Alora, for instance? Or do we entirely rely on HUD standards?
So Commissioner, in terms of if there is something that we are monitoring to see if a person qualifies at a certain level, it depends on the program. They will give us some very specific parameters of what can be included and we have lots of guidelines that we can go over. So it depends whether it's a HUD program, a tax credit program or something else fits ship. They give us very specific guidelines on what can be included in that number to be able to meet those income, income standards. The 30% or 33%, that's just a general rule of thumb, just to be able to get some numbers. But in terms of actuals, we have guidelines that we follow for, depending on the funding source.
Fair enough, all right. And I'll kind of skip the rest till later. The one thing though, we keep talking about ship and Sadowski, I mean, I don't even think it's, is it still called Sadowski? They're kind of using some quirky extra name for it, like crumbs for housing or something. I mean, that was cut 65% approximately and it looks like their concession, if this gets signed, which it will, is they're basically saying they're going to take 65% of all of the doc stamps we provide for affordable housing permanently, but promise us the other like 30% to 35% and they won't sweep that going forward. It's kind of an implication of locking that. That's a significant hit going forward. So a lot of these programs are going to need to be looked at. I mean, that's going from, you know, call it $4 million, give or take, to Manatee County if we got funded, to a million bucks, million and a half bucks, call it. So we do need to look at things like this because that's kind of where we are as guidance for this. Prices are going up, costs are going up, we need to get people in houses. We're going to have less money to do it from a Sadowski standpoint, I've got a few suggestions on that, but we can get to that later. But that is something we need to look at because Kevin, you're talking about some of those down payment assistance and we got it, you don't like hearing it, we have to spend it to get more. And I agree with that sentiment, but this isn't us going out and taxing people to spend it. You're paying these doc stamps whether you want to or not, these doc stamps you're going to Tallahassee whether you want it or not. They're giving some of it back. If we can't prove we have the program and the wherewithal to expend it, we're going to get less the following year. So I get what you're saying in concept, but, you know, there's a difference between concept and reality, there's a difference between real life and government. And we've got to prove, just like with the vaccines, if we couldn't prove we can distribute all the vaccines in a timely manner back in the day when they were tough to get, we would get less of them. So you just got to prove that you have a program to use the funds that they're, that they're giving us. And, you know, we do use some for down payment and I hear what you're saying, I was also in finance during the recession and people overburden themselves and that's a concern and we're just going to waste money. But that's not really how this program works. As you said, this is down payment assistance, the person moving into a home still needs to qualify for a senior mortgage. So they're not going out, the nice thing about what we're seeing now, not just in affordable but in market rate, is the banks aren't going crazy like they did in 2008. They're not giving 97% no-doc loans to people. So anyone who's getting our down payment assistance still has to qualify on a credit basis, an income basis, to get the senior loan first and then we're assisting them with the down payment. Because the reality is, we can all sit here and go, oh, it's just down payment. But trying to save 10% or 20% of the cost of a house is an extreme burden for a lot of people that are literally saying, should I go out and buy groceries or go out and buy medicine? And that's the gap we're providing with the doc stamps that the state of Florida is sending that on to us. But we're not providing it arbitrarily to fix and flip investors. These are people that have to qualify, that means that they most likely have a job, they've got some qualified level of credit to be able to go out and get a senior mortgage and the senior mortgage lender is willing to take essentially the bigger risk piece than we are. So I don't necessarily see it the way you do where this down payment assistance is something to be cautious about and it's risky. I think the down payment assistance is arguably the best thing we can do with the ship funds. I mentioned that a few weeks ago when we were talking about some metrics. So that's all I'll say about that. I do want to talk about the parking ratios you mentioned and impact fees, but, you know, I'd rather just move forward with this and then we could talk about it so I'm not jumping ahead of a future presentation.
Thank you. Misty, Commissioner Servia.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. So a couple of comments. You asked if the board is thinking that increasing the level of assistance is correct now, and I do. I think even with the increase of the down payment assistance, it's still going to be very difficult for people to find homes in that price category. I mean, I'm regularly talking with Realtors, regularly looking at the market in my area and I just don't see any homes in those price categories. So I think raising them is a no-brainer. I think we have to do that. I appreciate George's comments on the Great Recession because I believe the biggest problem we saw is deregulation in the financial industry that caused most of the problems. I don't think it was programs like this. I would like to know if we increase the assistance per household, do we have an estimation on how many fewer people we're going to be able to help? Or, I mean, can you talk about how many people we helped last year and in years past? And if we raise it, how many people you expect that we can help? I'd be interested in that. I do want to talk about parking ratios a little bit because it was in this segment of the presentation. And while I think that that's something that can be considered with a parking analysis with each project that comes forward, I think we have to be very careful in doing that because, you know, parking is needed. And just because people are at a certain income level doesn't mean that they don't have cars and transportation because in this area, you need a car to get around. We just don't have a good mass transit system. So most people do have one or two cars. And if we don't have places to park those cars that are efficient, then we're going to create other problems for the larger neighborhoods. So I think that needs to be approached very carefully. I'm all about reducing parking if we can do it. I just think there needs to be an analysis done each time. I'm interested in the rehab dollars available and how that program works a little bit more and what the restrictions are. Because I see a lot of affordable homes, maybe in these price point categories, but they need $100,000 worth of work, you know? And so people shy away from those and they say, well, I'll just go buy a new home for $300,000 rather than buy this $180,000 home and have to spend three months and $100,000 rehabbing it. So I'd like to hear a little bit more about that program too. Those are my comments. Thanks.
Commissioner Thatcher.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I had a question about, you mentioned that at certain times you can waive or you actually pay for the impact fee. What are the parameters on that? What do they have to do to qualify if a developer wants to build something to get that impact fee?
So that's for our livable manatee program and I can also talk about that a little bit later on the presentation, but just real briefly, once a developer is interested in doing that, they come meet with us. We usually hold a scoping meeting with them so they can meet our planners and stormwater and all of our other departments that can talk about what's needed as part of that. But once they are designated affordable, which means that they would have to eventually sell the home to an income-qualified buyer at these affordable prices. And then the way that we determine that affordability vehicle is a land use restriction agreement. So once they have and they sign that agreement, then we pay those, those impact fees. And it depends whether you're just an infill home, whether it's a subdivision or whether it's multifamily rental, it all depends on how. But, but you do have to sign a restriction and then we monitor that to make sure that it's to an income-qualified buyer at those, either the rent levels or the sales price levels.
Okay. So if we were to change the numbers, that would make more homes, it'd make it more attractive to a developer, more likely to build a home that would fit into this program, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And, and just for philosophy-wise, I don't like, you know, when government gets so involved that they're paying somebody to do something, things go wrong and messes up the free market. On the other hand, if the government makes a determination that maybe they could get out of the way in this situation, like by not charging the impact fee, you know, so there's an incentive, that seems a lot more reasonable and seems to work better. Maybe not perfect, but, but better. And am I right that from the, from what I'm hearing, there's more money currently available than our program can really use the way it's set up right now? Is that correct?
Yes.
So, and that money is coming from the state that's from our doc stamp. So it's our, technically our money, but in order to qualify to get it back, we need to expand our parameters so we can do more. Is that, is that the gist of what?
So we need to put our three-year plan together with all of these guidelines about if they give us the money and they do that on a yearly basis and we don't know how much they're going to give that to us because it's the state legislature that defines that budget on a yearly basis. So we don't know year by year how much we're going to get, but we generally use this plan and like, these are our parameters. So if we do have more funding, we can assist more people. So that's why last year, we hardly received any money at all. We didn't receive any. So we just use our program income. So those loans that, when people sell, I said we get that money back, that's the funding we've been using. So we, that's why when we did our housing report last month, there was only a few that we could serve because we didn't receive any funding from the state. And that's why we were trying to shift some funding over from HUD, from the federal government, to be able to keep the programs going. So yes, we would like more funding from the state and it looks like that's what's going through in the legislature. Not 100% of the funding that could be allocated, but a portion of it so that we could be able to help this segment of our community.
So I would just make a case that this is a program that, you know, coming from the state, we didn't set the rules. We didn't set the taxes, we didn't set the doc stamps, this is a state program. And so therefore, we have the rules already provided to us. It does seem wise and like a service to our constituents and to our county to make the best use of that as possible. And if we want to lobby to change that, to lower those, you know, those fees that are going to the state and then coming back to us, that would be a different decision. But, I mean, I grew up, you know, my parents are divorced and one of my parents would have large amounts of money come in and then go without money for a little while. And you knew, I would tell my parent, I won't say father or mother, but I would say, let's be real smart with this, you know, let's be wise, you want to budget this over time. It didn't happen. And so if you wanted new shoes, you better get them when the money came in from that parent. My other parent, very consistent, steady income, you know, and so you could be a lot wiser with how you were going to do things. In this case, you know, we didn't set the rules. We're going to need to make a, a good decision on how to use it. So I think it's very reasonable to increase the levels so that we can take more advantage of the rules that were provided, the money that were provided, that's available. I would like to encourage, you know, you mentioned the partnerships and staying out of, you know, the business of the government building, buying, selling, that that's not what we want. It does raise prices, it makes it harder for people to qualify, it makes it harder to use these things when the government is over-involved. So I would encourage any, you know, partnerships with nonprofits and even with that, if you just pick one, that nonprofit tends to start operating more and more like a government. So you have to, even with nonprofits, they do compete against each other. And so, you know, I think it would be smart to make it to where we're rewarding nonprofits that are doing a good job at taking advantage of this program as it, as it exists today. Thank you.
I'm going to just go ahead and mention a couple of things. I have Commissioner Whitmore and Commissioner Cruz on the board and then after that, we're going to take a 10-minute recess, just wanted to mention that. Also, Jerry, on impact fees, since it has been discussed somewhat, I just want to say, I know that last year, impact fees were changed on some of the issues that they can be used for or we don't have to use them. So I'm hoping that you will have that in your presentation when it comes forth because I know that Tallahassee did change their rules last year on that. So Commissioner Whitmore, you're next. So Commissioner Whitmore, you're next, and then Commissioner Cruz.
No pressure, Jerry. I want to welcome Jamie back. Jamie was a, a lot of you don't know, was our planner that used to be at all our land use meetings. And this position came open, and I remember her saying, I'm finally back to planning. So it's good to see it because we haven't seen you in a while. And Denise, you could probably remember this, maybe four, four or five years ago, I was at the hospital in my other job, and a social worker asked me to go in and talk to a very elderly lady. And I think she was in, maybe located in your area, Mr. Satcher. And I went and saw her. She was very elderly and she had a terrible situation in her home and her physical home also. So I got the information from her and then referred her to you. Don't know who she was, never saw her again. But what I heard, it was so bad that she actually qualified for a replacement. And you had to, and you built her a safe place to live. And, you know, statistically, I would assume that like, when she does pass, that, what happens to that? Since we paid for that, tell everybody what happens to that because this lady was in dire straits.
Well, currently, we do have an assumption policy so that if the individual passed, it can be passed on to one of their children or heirs who do not, who qualify for the income level.
Oh, still have to qualify.
And they'll take it on under the same term and conditions that the original owner had. We don't want property. We want to keep it in the family. And if they cannot, if no one is eligible, they can sell it, pay back our funds, and keep the proceeds. So that is what is in place right now.
So if the family member qualifies, like this lady did, they could stay there. If not, the family sells the home, we get paid back for everything we put into it and they keep the profit.
Correct.
Okay. But I just had a personal experience for a citizen that it actually did very well for. So thank you.
Yes. And I also want to say, when we deal with the elderly, we modify it for handicap accessibility so it's a livable unit for them.
Good idea.
Commissioner Cruz.
Yeah, just want to touch on two things people said, and then we can take a break and we'll cover the rest. Parking ratios, I hear what you're saying, but I think parking's the biggest waste of land, of space we've got. And it's a huge, it's a huge cost burden when you factor in land space and everything else we've got. Sure, you need parking, but there's a couple of things we need to consider and something to look into. One, there are certain areas that you can almost by right have less parking. A typical rule of thumb is if housing is within a half a mile of a major hub or a quarter mile of a line, then people are more inclined to walk to a bus line. People who are looking for affordable housing most likely don't have two cars. Second, developers have the burden of providing the parking. You know, developers, even affordable developers, are in the practice of making some level of profit. And you're not going to build one parking space per unit if the market won't bear one parking space per unit because what's going to happen is you have to keep lowering the rent of your unit until you finally find someone who's willing to rent one with one parking space, and that's just going to hurt. So developers aren't stupid. They're going to run an analysis and see how much parking they need. Like Dominion, for instance, they're building the age-restricted, they use 4% credits up in Palmetto, right by the convention center. They had to put together an analysis showing here's how much parking all of our other senior age-restricted units actually use to push, to squeeze down some of their parking to make it a viable project for them. So, you know, developers are taking that risk. If you don't provide enough house, enough parking, then people aren't going to move in there if they've got two cars and you only give them one. And the third thing I'm going to say is, you know, every time we talk about parking, because we talked about those ADUs, we're taking a break after this. So I do this on purpose.
We are taking a break.
No, but when we talk about ADUs, it's the same thing. We act like every time there's a few less parking spaces, everyone's just going to flood our streets with cars. We've got parking ordinances already in place. You know, you'll get a ticket if you park where you're not allowed to park. Let's just enforce the parking, the on-street parking restrictions we've already got. And again, then people won't be able to park there, people won't move into the unit. That's the developer's risk. I don't know why we're restricting what developers can and can't provide. And the other thing I was going to mention was the impact fees. I 100% agree that impact fees should be waived on affordable housing. I think this game of moving money from one pocket to another doesn't make sense. If you look at Florida statute, and I actually wrote it down, 163.31801, Section 9, it specifically states that municipalities can have ordinances that allow them to entirely waive affordable housing, impact fees, without any additional revenue source to account for it. So we should look into that. There's no reason to charge it just to move it from one of our pockets to the other. We also need to look at the school board, who have the most egregious impact fees in this county. Their impact fees are not only higher than the county impact fees, but they're regressive in that, I don't care if you build 500 square feet or 5,000 square feet, you pay the exact same impact fee. Obviously, there's a difference of impact. So we are going to need to ideally work with them because we can waive our impact fees all day long, but that doesn't do a whole lot of good if there's still $6,000, $7,000 impact fees on a 500-square-foot affordable housing unit. So I think we should work in conjunction with them. But there are ways of flat-out waiving impact fees on affordable housing. I think that's a carrot. Like James or Commissioner Satcher said, you know, we shouldn't be in the habit of building things, we shouldn't be in the habit of forcing people to do things, but we should be encouraging things. And if you can tell people you're effectively lopping $15,000 worth of cost off of the construction of a home day one or construction of a unit day one just by waiving impact fees, that's a huge financial benefit, and that goes a long way of convincing people to start doing what this community needs them to do without expending, without us forcing anybody to do it. That's all. We can take a break now. Bye, Misty.
I already have you down, Commissioner Servia. We are going to go ahead and take a 10-minute recess right now, and I would ask that when we come back, if everyone would put their cell phones on mute. Thank you. We're trying to get started again.
Thank you, Mr. Henry. We're about to start.
Damn. Yes. Commissioner, calling on you next time. All right, we're going to go ahead and start. Commissioner Servia has a comment? Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. As we continue our discussion on parking needs, just a couple of comments, you know? So I do wish that we had, I do wish we had a more robust transit system. It just doesn't work here yet. Hopefully someday we will have that, but we don't. And so people have cars, just like people have cell phones. No matter their income levels, people have cars because it's needed. If you don't believe me, I want you to take a drive through Fairlane Acres, which is a mobile home park. And we have so many cars there that they can't fit them all in the driveway and they're parked on the street. And why do we care about that? We care about that because fire trucks and ambulances can't get through when there's an emergency. I'll take you, I can, well, we can't go places together because the sunshine. But if we could, I would take you on a tour of some of my neighborhoods where we have five, six, eight cars parked in the front yard because you don't just have one family. You don't...
Auto-tune if you're in a car?
That was not me, that was our chairman.
It wasn't me.
Oh.
No.
I don't think it was me.
It wasn't your chairman.
Okay. I thought it was your phone.
No.
If we could go on a tour together, I would show you where there are five, eight, 10 cars sometimes in the front yard and along the street. Why is that? Because people can't afford the housing. So you have two and three families tripling up on homes. So is parking needed? It absolutely is needed. Are there instances where it's not needed? Maybe. So that's why I say, you know, show me the study. If we can do a study that shows that they're only renting to people who can't drive for some reason, then we don't need parking. I don't want to build parking unnecessarily, but I also don't want to put the burden on the neighborhood and on public safety because we don't have enough parking. As for impact fees, I do understand that impact fees are one of the main challenges to affordable housing. But I'm a little bit different than what I'm hearing here because I'm not in favor of waiving impact fees. I'm in favor of paying them. There's still an impact. If you, let's take a ride over to Robin's Apartments, okay? Those are 300 square feet or less. There are children living in those apartments. They still go to school. People still drive on our roadways. People still go to our libraries, and arguably, they're going to use more of our facilities because they have less square footage at home. So if you're living in a 5,000-square-foot mansion in Lakewood Ranch, or if you're living in a 300-square-foot home at Robin's Apartments, I think the impact on our community is similar. And that's why the school impact fees are similar because you're not going to have 50 kids living in the 5,000-square-foot mansion. You're going to have two kids.
We don't have many of those in Lakewood Ranch, so you know, Misty, but thank you.
Okay. Well, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I thought you did. I've been out there. I've seen them.
Well, enough. Thank you.
Okay. No offense meant, Madam Chairman, but it doesn't matter the size of the house because that's based on the family income, right? So just because you have a larger home, you still are a family of four. Whether you're living at Robin's Apartments or you're living in a larger home, no matter where it is, the impacts are similar on our school district. And as I said on the example of libraries, maybe even a greater impact. So I don't think that we can waive the fees because we need the infrastructure. How are we going to build the infrastructure without the money? But I do say, let's help these people with those fees because it is the biggest challenge to affordable housing. So let's make sure that we have a revenue source or money that's allocated for paying those fees so we can get the housing that we need. I'm done. Thank you.
Commissioner Cruz. And then, I'm sorry, Commissioner, Mr. Clay.
All right. I mean, this is a direct response. It's not meant to be confrontational. It's more just my opinion, and we're all allowed to have opinions up here. That's why there's seven of us, not one of us. Whenever we talk about things, I feel like sometimes we just, it's easier just to blindly look at the entire county as a whole and just say, well, because parking is bad in some area of District 4, therefore, parking ratios are off the table. Now, you can look at things in terms of pockets and in spots. You can look at things from a policy standpoint that our staff can look into strategically and not just say, well, there's this mobile home park down here and they have narrow roads, so therefore, let's not discuss parking ratios. You know, like I said, if you're within a quarter mile of a transit line or half mile of a bus line, people walk. But more importantly, if you work towards incentivizing people to live near where they shop, where they go out for entertainment, where they work, then they're less inclined to need a car in the first place. So, you know, that's why we need to focus this. It may not be every place. We don't have to just say, let's waive all parking ratios throughout the entire county. But, you know, we should be working with, you know, the city of Bradenton and with city of Palmetto. We have something we call an urban core. But, you know, where's the density down here where people can live in a higher-density place that doesn't need the same parking because they can walk to the Bradenton Financial Center where they're working at Merrill Lynch, and they can walk out to O'Brieks and grab dinner? And, you know, and you get more and more housing down here, you know, retail's not stupid. They're going to follow the rooftops. You're going to get a grocery store down here, just like Sarasota did. They built up Rosemary and Publix showed up. So if you incentivize developers to height and density to build closer to employment bases and services, then you're accomplishing a number of things. One, you're helping with infrastructure in the first place because less cars on the road. You're helping with our retail. You're helping with our employment bases, getting more young professionals here. And that has a lot to do with the half-units we discussed. I campaigned on half-units. I spoke about it in work sessions here in the past. Half-units are amazing because, again, we don't have to pay people to do things. People do things because they want to make more profit. And if you can convince a developer that we have half-units at 750 square feet if we just want to mirror Sarasota, and they have a 1,500-square-foot envelope, they can build me one 1,500-square-foot unit, counts as a unit for density, they got to pay the impact fees on it, so on. You know, or they could build me two 750-square-foot units in the exact same envelope, but both those units combine for the same one-unit density. Both those units combine for the two parking spaces they would have to pay. Both those units combine for the same amount of impact fees. They're going to build me the 750-square-foot units, and those units may only be $900 to $1,000 each because they're smaller and teachers can afford them and nurses can afford them. The 1,500 square foot's going to be two grand. Very few people are going to be able to afford that. It doesn't even fit into the matrix we presented previously. So, you know, these are things we should be doing, and these are things we should be doing in conjunction with our cities to make them happen. So I'm not saying we just have to blindly get rid of parking ratios throughout the county, but we should be looking at things near what we do have from a mass transit line and things near where we do have employment bases and services in place because that's going to cut down on the cars on the road, the infrastructure that we need, you know, running more sewer lines. We've got those in place. That's what smart growth is, is, you know, as Kevin or Commissioner Van Ostenbridge said earlier, you know, anyone who's taken an economics class or third-grade math understands supply and demand imbalance. So I don't care if you're building a $1 million square foot, or $1 million house or a $100,000 house. Both of them help the overall affordability of Manatee County because it's housing somebody and it all trickles down. The person buying that million-dollar house, the owner needs the 800 and then the 600, and it trickles up all housing. We have 10,000 people per year moving here. At two and a half people per house, which is an average for United States roughly, that's 4,000 housing units to break even. You're not cutting cost of housing one bit by building 4,000 houses because all we're doing is matching the new demand. And that doesn't count obsolescence of old houses getting torn down or anything like that. That's our problem, is a supply-demand issue right now. And we can either sprawl out endlessly, and I know we're going to be talking about that later, or we can work on getting those housing units in a more efficient way here in Manatee County without needing to overburden ourselves with more infrastructure and sewer and get people living places. So I say we focus on the urban cores. We focus on the places where we can put more density, then we need less parking because they're closer where they want to be. And, you know, one last thing because I see a bunch of green flying, but the, from the impact fee thing, I just don't understand, like, you know, two things. One, if we're going to make the argument that somebody living in Robin's apartment has two kids, they should pay the same impact fee as a 5,000-square-foot, so therefore, the school boards justify, well, the people living in Robin's apartments, most likely, based on the discussion we just had, also have two cars. So why aren't they paying the same transportation impact fee? Why aren't we just charging a fine impact fee across the board for everything then? Because that's just not how we do it. We've already structured this to be progressive instead of regressive, so I don't see how that's any different. And us just saying, we're not going to waive it, we're going to pay it, well, you know, it's moving money from one place to another. I think the argument being made, and Glenn's made this argument, is one of the ways we get around paying the impact fees today instead of waiving them is by swiping it from things like livable manatee, which just gives us less money in those very meager funds we've already assigned to this. And we use it towards paying ourselves impact fees, and that money could be better spent paying down payment assistance and working on renovations and things like that. All we're doing is moving it from one pocket to another, whether we waive it or not. We can take general fund money and put it there we can do. But the way we do it today, I think, is ineffective to best use our money that we've set aside, which is, again, very, very little, especially in light of how much Sodowsky funds are getting swept and now permanently cut, that we're blowing it unnecessarily on paying ourselves impact fees when there's better use of those funds.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, let me make sure this is working. Yeah. Is this all right? Okay. The decision about whether or not to waive impact fees for affordable housing is forthcoming to the board. The language that Commissioner Cruz recited from the Florida Impact Fee Act is fairly recent. I want to say it's the last legislative session, maybe the one right before that. So until that time, the practice was if you wanted to reduce impact fees for affordable housing, you had to pay them down with public funds. That had been the law. In order to incorporate the ability to waive them, you need to address it in your impact fee study and incorporate it in the code. And the county is currently in the process of its impact fee update, and the proposed draft language that will at some point come to the board does include the ability of the board to decide whether or not to waive impact fees, which obviously will be a fiscal policy decision for the board. But it is in the works in terms of bringing it to you as something you can decide whether or not to do.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And it's only a suggestion, it's certainly at the chair's discretion in order to move the meeting along. The guidance, the guidance that we staff are looking for around the local housing assistance program are those two items that are on the screen. And if we could do that, it would be very helpful because we have a lot of content to follow and we need additional guidance on the subsequent sections. Thank you, Madam Chair.
I agree with what George was saying largely when you're talking about a city like the city of Bradenton. I lived in a 300 square foot studio down on the river when I used to work for Manatee County. And I would ride my bike here and I would ride my bike home. But when you're talking about living in the suburbs and you are within a half mile of a transit line, it's, I'm telling you that people are not going to walk when it's raining, when it's 95 degrees and go stand at a bus that may take them an hour to get to a 15-minute drive. They're going to go buy a car and it may be a car that requires a lot of maintenance, but it still needs to be parked. So that's all that I'm going to say about that. We can talk about it more.
Commissioner Van Austinbridge, are you willing to move forward? Thank you very much. All right, I'm going to go ahead at this time and open public comment. It is only going to be, please, I'm asking for your assistance here to make sure we follow this. It will be only on what has been presented so far in the meeting today. It's, yeah. Well, it's just about everything now, isn't it? So the first one that I have is Glenn Jubalina. If you'll state your name, you'll have three minutes.
Glenn Jubalina, for the record, you have two other sections that are going to talk about impact fees. I can wait until that time if you like.
That would be great, Glenn, if you don't mind.
Okay, so I will just talk about these. I think it's a great idea that we increase it. I do want to say that George is exactly right that the Sadoski funds were raided again permanently and all four of our legislators from this area voted to raid it. So disappointed in that. But we do need to increase that. And I will tell you that this affordable housing's been going on for 20 years. This is the piney point of affordable housing. Band-aids are not going to fix it.
Next is Steve Reinhardt.
Steve Reinhardt. These guidelines were presented, I'm part of the AHAQ Board, Affordable Housing. And I'm encouraged, I'm glad to see the limits were actually raised from that presentation. So I'm in firm support of this. You know, the article in Bradenton Herald, if you didn't see him, that we're in Manatee County, we're one of the, leading in the nation in the wrong category, the least amount of affordable housing. So it's, it is a piney point, for sure. So, thank you.
Anyone else from the public here that would like to come forward? Please do. Ken, and just state your name, you'll have three minutes, sir. Thank you.
Ken Piper, Manatee County citizen. I'm going to apologize to everybody for being as old as I am because I can remember all the mistakes that have been made in public housing since as long as I could remember, which would be the 60s, but this has been going on since 1945. Government is not the solution. Government creates the problem. Kevin's idea is best. I mean, we all struggle with how we're going to do this, but somehow we need to create the supply from the private sector. Now, the reason that we struggle so much with money is that the government's already taxed us. There isn't any money left in the private economy. So government has to do it. So when government does it, at the federal level, we know they print money. And now they're printing trillions of money, which is going to result in even more inflation than what we have right now. Now, Commissioners, I'm going to ask you something. We have talked about lenders, builders, and nonprofits. And nobody mentioned one single word about the taxpayers and the voters. Now, we're the ones with the skin in the game. Basically, you're talking about giving people no skin in the game, and when they have no skin in the game, we know what happens. The same thing that happened in 2008. The value of everybody's property went down. And I know that because I bought one of those houses that were down. And as long as people have no skin in the game, and that means they don't pay any of their own money down, and if they default, the government will come along and they will forgive that loan, and there will be no penalty to them because unlike most of us who default and maybe the loan's forgiven, it's taxed to us. But there's no tax here. So as long as people have no skin in the game whatsoever, as long as there's no, and this is a bad word, this is another one of those bad C words, and that is as long as there's no capitalist incentive in here, nobody, nobody that's taking advantage of this program is going to care whether they default or not. And then again, there's a bunch of us that will be sitting here, we're doing nothing except paying our taxes, paying the mortgages, and our house sits there and decreases by at least half in value and maybe more than that. So the only thing I would say, I guess, staff has come up with these ideas, okay? And this is the second day that I've been here that I've heard staff coming up with ideas. The Commissioners need to set the priorities. Where is this on our list of priorities? Okay, you guys have started right, okay? You have the roads, okay? Roads are a big project. And I was so happy to see those yellow barrels on Upper Manatee River Road because I knew what was happening finally. And Vanessa, I haven't been down Lena Road, but I'm guessing you would probably smile too if you were down there. That's a priority. All right. And now, also now, we have that cleanup out there. You guys set the priorities again and you see what happened. I mean, I told James that in 50 years of being involved in politics, last week was the best week of my life because everything worked together and everybody worked together. And it didn't help that everybody was of one party either, but be that as it may. So, these folks need to be given some guidance. They need to be told what the priorities are and, okay, I'm sorry, I'm done. Thank you.
The general consensus I've been hearing is that it has been generally supportive given that we have these additional funds coming in from ship to be able to meet market demands and to help more of our community, that we do raise our sales price minimums and our level of assistance per household.
Jerry, I just want to add that the reason I did not say anything is because, number one, we can't vote. We've all had a lot of discussion. I'm sure staff knew exactly where we're coming from and what we're thinking. So that's what I was going to say. Thank you, Jerry. Go ahead.
And Jerry, I would say that I'm not ready to weigh in with an opinion on this yet. Thank you.
So just in terms of the next step for this one, we will complete our local housing assistance plan with this general direction. That does come before the board on April 20th. So at that point, we could have more direction there, but we do need the approval from the board for that plan so that we can submit it to the state by its deadline of May 2nd. So you'll see it again next Tuesday. Okay. Okay, so moving on, I'm going to try to go through this quickly. There are several points of guidance that we do need here. As you know, you have an affordable housing advisory committee. We do set this committee by state standards. And with the legislative approval of a House Bill 1339, a lot of the points to the committee has changed. One is that before the plan was, the report was every three years. It's been changed to every year. So the committee does need to continue to meet. You just assigned several new members to the board. One of the other changes is that the elected official will also be a voting member of the AHAQ. That was part of the changes to the legislation. And you have here all of these items here. This is who is included. We have a couple more vacancies, so we'll be bringing that over to you so you have another opportunity to discuss it. But your AHAQ has been meeting since last summer. They've had some very robust discussions. We have several members in the audience here today. You received that report and accepted that report in December. What staff has done since then is gone through the evaluation of those specific recommendations to bring you back where we believe some next steps need to be and receive your guidance to that request. So the first one is on the Utilities Direct Connection Fee. And I'll just have Katie Gilmore from Utilities be able to present this section.
Katie Gilmore, Water Division Manager with Utilities. One of their recommendations was for the Utilities Department to look at our direct connection fee. And just for a reminder, for anyone who doesn't know, that is the fee that we charge to the builder during single-family residential construction. Previously, there used to be a metered connection for single-family homes when they were being built. In 2006, we changed this, so it's a direct connection to our potable water system. And the reason, because those meters on a single-family construction site, there's a lot of times they were destroyed or damaged or needed to be replaced. So back in 2006, we set up our direct connection fee. The structure was that you could connect to our system for eight months. You pay a fee of $600. If the building went over eight months and you were not ready for your permanent meter, then you would pay $100 each month thereafter. The initial fee is paid when the permit fees are all paid, and then you would settle up any additional fees prior to being allowed to get your meter. And so they came to us and they said, well, for affordable housing particularly, eight months is too long and $600 is too much. So what can we do to change that fee? Our discussions with them early on in the process were that we cannot charge a separate fee for affordable housing due to our ordinances that require us to charge the same rates and fees to all users of the same class. So instead, they looked at it and said affordable housing takes lower construction times, less times to build those homes. And so their recommendation was to basically just cut that structure in half. So four months instead of eight and $300 instead of 600. And then if those homes did go over the four-month period, we would continue to charge that additional fee. So we wanted to look at that a little more in depth. And because we couldn't, again, set this fee separate for affordable housing, so we thought it was a good chance to overlook the, look at the fee as a whole. And so we looked at the time that the average construction in Manatee County, affordable or not, for single-family homes. And in fiscal year '20, it was 5.3 months. So everybody is taking less than that eight months that was originally set up in 2006. And if you look at that, the amount of homes that are built within five months that are completed after four months is over half of them. So we didn't think the four-month time would quite capture the majority of the builders and be the best fee structure because people would be having to go back and pay those additional fees at the end. So we recommended taking the same philosophy as they came up with, but instead of four months, setting that initial time period to five months. So that's Utilities Department recommendation to go with five months for $375. And then if you go over the five months, charge that additional fee. And so here, they did want to stop and just have any discussion you may have because we do need your guidance for us to make that change. That direct connection fee is part of our rate resolution, so it would have to come back to the board for board approval. So prior to us preparing that, we wanted to see if there were any comments or discussions, discussion about making that change. I'm done. That's all. Yep.
I don't quite understand. So you're talking about now five months and 375, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, I'm just curious. I mean, this is affordable housing. I would think we should be able to do this. I mean, I know you mentioned your ordinance. Well, you know what? That can be changed, obviously. We know that. So I'm just curious, what is the actual cost involved to the utility department for something like this? What's the actual cost?
I don't have that exact number. So that cost, that's all the water they're using during construction. And so normally, if it's a regular home, once they're built, we're metering that water and we have our rates that we charge for the actual water usage and your base rate for the meter for the system. And so this is an un-metered connection to our system for all the water they may need to use during construction. And so when it was originally set up in 2006, they had the data when meters were installed during construction, and they kind of took an average of what, how much water would be used during construction for all the construction purposes and any irrigation they may do during construction, any risk of leaving those connections just running overnight because they're not through a meter and there's no incentive to turn them off. Most people would, of course, but things happen. So I don't have a direct cost as far as, but it's the cost of that water and of that service that we're providing.
And if I could just ask, you mentioned this was done in 2006?
Yes.
Has it not been done since? This is 2021?
We haven't changed the fee. So this eight months?
So it's not been checked?
It has not, it hasn't been checked, has not been increased or decreased on either the time or on the cost.
All right. All right. Commissioner Serbia.
I just wanted to say that I was a part of that discussion because I sit on the Affordable Housing Committee. And what we heard is that they can construct these homes faster and they didn't need the full eight months. And so I think that what you're recommending is a really good option and serves what we heard that the affordable housing developers need. So thank you for the compromise. I think it works.
Any other Commissioners comment?
Did we get, how much is the fee? Did we get that?
375.
375.
375 for five months.
For five months, okay. We could just go to a monthly structure or a weekly structure or what?
Potentially, we could. The thought was right now, the way that the builders pay that fee, they pay an initial upfront fee during their permit when they pay all their fees. And once they've done that, then basically they're good. As long as they finish within that time period, they don't have to settle back up with us. If they go over, they do. And so just for kind of efficiency and ease of operations for all the builders involved, charging a monthly fee, I don't know how much of a burden that is, but it does involve us charging it, involves somebody paying it. There's a little more process involved.
Sure, okay. Thank you.
All right, go ahead. And that's all I have, so we'll let them move on. Thank you.
Now we have Bill O'Shea from the Building and Development Services Department to go over the next two recommendations.
Bill O'Shea for Building and Development Services. Here to present a couple points to you regarding some changes that the Planning Department's currently looking at. One of them is in regards to the density bonus. There was a recommendation from the AHAQ Committee that we look at three specific standards zoning districts and adjust the, I believe it was the lot widths and minimum square footage to accommodate smaller homes with less land. So we are currently working on those Land Development Code changes. Building and Development Services is a part of AHAQ. We do attend on a regular basis and work with the AHAQ on some of their recommendations. So a lot of what we had worked with them on is going to be presented to you at a later time in the form of Land Development Code text amendments. Oh, actually, the next one is, these slides are in different order. The next one was a recommendation to bill affordable housing projects for the review fees, but not collect them when we normally would do for regular projects. This is, will help with their cash flow issues, but once they get to the point of committing to the affordable housing, which would be at final site plan when they enter into the land use restriction agreement, or perhaps a little bit later at the first certificate of occupancy, if they commit to those, the fees will be permanently waived. If they do not proceed with an affordable housing project, then they would be liable for those fees. And staff is requesting guidance to proceed with that particular allowance. And that's all I have for you today.
All right, Bill, let me see if there's any, I think that's great. Thank you to you guys for looking to do that. I think that's wonderful. Any other comments, Commissioners? Yes, ma'am?
Because as we've seen a million times, sometimes it doesn't work out and it falls through. So with this way, I think it's much better. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
That's all I see, Bill. Kudos to the Building Department for that. Thank you.
All right, the next topic I will cover, and one of the discussions that I have a lot with our developers is around trees. So this is one where we have been really struggling, because sometimes that could really be a high cost for them. It really hinders their ability to keep going. So there is a tree trust protection fund that money does go into, that it gets paid into it. And so what we wanted to do, and we could kind of bring this forward, but at this point, I'll just introduce it, is that it's mainly been our Parks and Natural Resources Department that has been using the funds in there to be able to place trees elsewhere. So we wanted to bring forward a policy to have affordable housing also share into the funds here to be able to help the developers that really need assistance with that tree. The LDC allows for it. It's just that we don't really have a policy of how to be able to tap into those funds. So the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee recommended being able to prioritize these tree trust funds for affordable housing. So our recommendation is to bring forward to you a policy. So that's one that we can bring back to discuss. If there's any quick questions right here.
I think this is wonderful, because we love, I love Charlie Hunsaker to death, but he seems to always get the trees for the preserves. So I think, he's not here, is he? Good. But anyway, I'm so happy that we can use this for our affordable housing. And I think this should be a priority, because City of Bradenton has their, the Tree USA. And we just talked about this, I think, yesterday, a couple meetings ago, or maybe it was this week, but I forgot what day it is. But I think this is wonderful. I think we should incentivize us allowing to use our tree trust fund for affordable housing. I really do. Because that'll bring up the quality of the project and decrease the expense for the builders. Thanks.
Comments, Commissioners? Anything else? Not seeing anyone. All right, go ahead, Jerry.
All right, our next topic is Livable Manatee. You've already had a robust discussion on this one. Just a little context. The Livable Manatee Fund, which is generally what we call it, as you go through the budget process and you'll see those numbers, it's being, it's referred there to as the Affordable Housing Subsidy Fund. So when you're going through your book, that's the, that's the fund that's there. So there was money in there for impact fees, but it wasn't really being used. And that's when, when we created the Livable Manatee Program, we made it much more robust to be able to take advantage of it. When we first started, there was about $3 million in there. So we have been slowly going through that. And I showed you some of the results, which have been really good and helping to bring on additional units. The way that it works is, it clearly, as you have all been discussing, is a policy decision about how to use these funds. Right now, the direction has been to pay those impact fees according to the Livable Manatee Program. But this, the origination of these are general fund dollars. So we can use those however you direct us to use our livable, our general fund dollars. So here, in terms of the budgeting process for that, we request funds from the fund to be able to be placed in our budget to be able to pay for those fees as projects come online. And they correspond to the timing of the projects. As you can imagine, I talked about some of the other projects. They do sometimes take a long time to come forward, and we pay those fees at the time right before their CO. So timing them gets a little, gets a little tricky. I brought, this is just a snapshot of the spreadsheet that I use of trying to understand all of the projects that we have underway. And then at what time do we anticipate paying those fees? And that's where the request for the budget comes in. So when you see that budget request, it aligns with what projects we see. So sometimes the comments have been made, well, you should have more money, you should ask for more money in the budget. The thing is, is I know that I won't be able to use it, because I don't have enough projects in the pipeline. We do have a bit of a cushion if there are some projects that are moving faster for us to do that. But at any point in time, I can always come back to you and ask for a budget amendment. And I have done that in the past. One of the changes that we did add previously last year, in order to be able to have these dollars go further, we are using TIF dollars, so our tax increment financing dollars in the Southwest District to pay for those projects that are in the Southwest District as opposed to using Livable Manatee. So that's why this gets a little complicated. You see the green. So the green are those projects that are in the district that would get paid out of Southwest District TIF money, which means that then our regular affordable housing subsidy fund dollars go a little bit further. So for next year, we have several projects that are coming, coming online that we anticipate. And again, this is a moving piece, but we tie those dollars to the budget request and then the projects that are coming through. So just real brief, there's about 1.1 million in the fund. There's some money in reserves for some of those projects that I said in terms of timing. But again, the funds in here are used for those payment of those fees according to our program. And then there is some money in there also for land acquisition that we had talked about with previous boards. So in talking to our Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, they did recommend continuing to fund the Livable Manatee Program. But as we have policy discussions about either creating new programs using that fund, that's something that we'll be happy to put together and bring forward. Any other questions before I move on to some additional topics?
Anything, Commissioners?
Okay, moving right along. So there are three policy considerations that we wanted to talk to you about today to get your guidance in order to proceed. So the three are creating a process for selling surplus property to for-profit developers for affordable housing. So we'll talk about that. The second one is to proceed with a pilot project to be able to place a property in a community land trust. This may have a little bit more discussion, and we can try to schedule a different time to have a more robust discussion on this one. And then the next one is to, we have a proposal to expand our down payment assistance program to be able to use our Southwest District TIF dollars. This came as a direct result of the annual report that we presented as part of the indicators and the statistics in the district to be able to encourage more homeownership and stabilize the funding, the funding there. So for the surplus property process, you had a work session with property management in February that went through the process of what they do. Our department is part of that process. So as parcels are available, it comes to us to be able to evaluate it for affordable housing. So we look at lot size, buildability, accessibility, so ingress, egress, the character of the, of the community and the neighborhood where that lot is. We look at zoning, combining lots. We look at all of those things. We do a drive-by in order to determine whether it's something that's suitable. One item that there, there were some that I did want to clarify is that our department is only authorized to convey the county-owned properties. So those that are deemed surplus for affordable housing, we can only convey to a nonprofit per ordinance 0530. So we have, we work with property management on a continuous basis. We meet with them yearly to look at what's available. We have a list. It's also on, as part of the map on the, kind of on the website. And so as nonprofits, we, as we talk to them and they have interest, they go through and submit an application. We look at it for review. If everything aligns, we complete that agenda item. Then we do our land use restriction agreement and that conveyance deed for the board resolution. Yes, sir?
I just had one question about what you just said, so it didn't get lost. You said we have to sell to nonprofits based on ordinance three, whatever.
I'm sorry, I said donate. I'm sorry.
But is that, that's a local ordinance? Is that what you're saying? That's just what I'm asking, because I mean, you know, we have some things that are, that are part of statute. Some are local ordinance. I'm just asking a question.
It is driven in part by the requirements of Florida statutes, but it is our surplus land ordinance.
But I may just be wrong or had misread something in the past, but I thought for surplus land, counties, I mean, it's probably were allowed to sell to for-profit as long as the proceeds from the sale was directed towards uses of affordable housing.
That's correct.
Okay, I just want to make sure. So we theoretically could change that ordinance to allow for sale as long as we put in there that we move the money towards some sort of trust fund of some kind.
There are a number of ways under Florida law you can sell to a for-profit company. Ms. Lopez was talking about donations of land.
Yes.
And that's a little different under Florida statutes.
Correct. So this is, this one is the donation part. So there's always been about how do we do, how do we deal with the for-profit side? And that has never really been clear. So we have met with Joy Leggett-Murphy from Property Management to come up with a proposal of how just to do that. And we feel that we can do that with our current system. So I'm just going to turn it over to her to explain.
Before you do, Jerry, Commissioner Van Austin-Bridge?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jerry, is there a list of properties that you have identified or that Joy has identified as, you know, fitting the bill?
So two things. When we look at the surplus property, we've been, we also, we just looked at it from that perspective of the donation to the nonprofits that we work with. And there, Denise, you said there's six on that list. So approximately. So there's the overall surplus property list that you've all, kind of there's that list, I believe, that you all received back in February. Some of this are not suitable at all for housing, because as you can see, like there's, there's, some of them are just really small remainder lots. So in going through this, there's still not a lot of properties on here that would be suitable. So that's, that's part of the conversation, I think, that we need to have to clarify what really is it that we do have available.
Great. That's the direction I want to go with this. I'm hoping the rest of the board will weigh in on that. I would like to get way more aggressive with that list and not just what we deem surplus, because there are properties that I can think of off the top of my head that is not, are not on the surplus list that are not being used. The county has owned them for years and years and years, and they haven't been using them. So maybe we need to change the definition of what we're looking for from surplus to unused property. That might be the direction we want to go there. And then also a little direction from the county attorney on donating property is one thing to a, to a charity. But also, if we're, what is the definition of selling a property? Is it selling it at fair market value? Who's determining that? Can we sell something to a for-profit below market value with, of course, strings attached? Is that a possibility? And then, of course, from Jerry's perspective, you know, hopefully, we can get her more direction as far as what we're looking for in a list. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Van Austin-Bridge, the answer to your last question is yes. You can sell at a discounted value if there is a required use of the property, like affordable housing, that is binding on the owner for a period of time.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, on that note, I did want to bring up the list that you talked about, Jerry, that we got in February. Yeah, all of our properties are not on that list. So I'm going to assume that whomever put this list together looked to see if there were any properties that maybe the county might want to use in the future. Is that correct?
Correct. So we own 762 parcels. But remember, parcels are not properties.
Right.
We talked about this in February, how 144 parcels make up Duette Preserve, Rye Preserve, and Lake Manatee. So of the 170, 762 parcels, you know, 145 are just those three areas. So my team constantly reviews the parcels that we own. We constantly review their uses. We reach out to all the departments in the county to see if there's any potential future use. So the booklet you received in February are 42 parcels. Since February, we have reviewed 20 of those parcels. One has been deemed surplus. The other 20 has been asked to be retained by different departments. Mostly, we get requests from Public Works to retain for stormwater and for right-of-way. Occasionally, we'll have utilities requests for a future lift station or something like that. But this is a continuous process. We're always looking at these parcels. We have them in review all the time. The ones that are asked to be retained, we put them on a separate list. We make a tickler, and after a year, we come back and ask them again. Are you still going to use this? An example, I've spoken with Commissioner Cruz. There's three parcels in Rubonia that we could potentially surplus. Public Works has asked them to be retained, because they're doing a stormwater project out there. We know that stormwater project is in process right now. About every six months, I say, hey, can you release those yet? Can you release those yet? So as soon as their stormwater project is finished, I will ask them again to release them so that we can sell them. We can't release them right now, because we may put a pond there. And it wouldn't make any sense to release the parcel and then go buy another parcel to put a pond on. So that's kind of our process. I do want you to know, we have been working very diligently for at least the five years I've been here to continue to comb through these parcels to make sure that they're being used in the best way possible. So that's where we are. I think what Jerry has proposed and what's up on this board for you right now, sorry.
Joy, can I comment?
Sure.
On my question? I think it's great that the departments decide all of that. But I do think ultimately, it should be up to this board to make those decisions. Particularly, we should see the whole list and maybe get something from each department as to why they want certain properties retained. And I think the board should have the ultimate say on that. That's just my thought.
We have that available if you would like to see that entire list.
I'd like it sent to all Commissioners. I think we should all see that, truly.
I also want to bring up a point, that if a citizen requests something be sold and it is asked to be retained, we do go back to the department that asked for it and say, you know, we have an interest in selling it. Please take a deeper look at this. Please take a deeper dive. When there is a conflict between departments, we try to bring those departments together to determine what the use might, the best use might be.
It's almost like, according to the Bible, having to cut the baby in two.
We're constantly negotiating with other people.
Commissioner Whitmore, I have you down, but you're not next. Commissioner Satcher, then Commissioner Van Austin-Bridge, and then Commissioner Whitmore.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I kind of wanted to echo what you were saying there. I think that if we're going from 762, we're subtracting 144 off the top, and then, of course, right-of-way, it still seems like we should have more than six left over. And I understand the Rubonia. We, I may understand every sing, you know, all of them, once we see them. So I'm not saying, but I think that, you know, I am not in favor of a, you know, a clearance sale and liquidate and every single thing we, I don't think that's a good idea. I don't think that's wise for a growing county. On the other hand, we shouldn't be hoarding properties. And if we're not doing that, great, but I'd like to see it. And, and also for citizens that are requesting properties, how, how are they, how do they even know that that property is owned? If it's not set up, if it's not displayed as available? I'm sure that there's some, obviously, there are circumstances where people know that. But I, I mean, I almost would, we should default that a citizen somewhere would like that property. And so everyone should be treated that way, in my mind. Because, anyway, I would like to see that list, as a chair said. And, or at least, you know, have the, yeah, I'd like to see the list.
We have a spreadsheet. Would you like for me? We have a spreadsheet that has every parcel we own and has all of its current and potential uses. And if you would like, we can circulate that around.
Thank you, Joy. Yes, if you would send it to all the Commissioners, we'd really appreciate it. Commissioner Van Austin-Bridge, and then Commissioner Whitmore.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm actually, I think, more troubled by this subject now than I was before the meeting. So the spreadsheet sounds difficult to read. I haven't seen it yet, but I know how spreadsheets are. It's not, I'm a pretty visual person. I would prefer accompanying the spreadsheet a map as well with some pens in it. And if we could even break it down to simplify things by zip code, that would be fantastic. And in addition to just parcels, we have parcels that we, like, kind of like you explained, right? Like at Rye and Duette, you have 100 and some odd parcels that comprise one preserve. In this, in the same fold, on the opposite fold, put it that way, sometimes we have one large parcel that is not being fully utilized and has lots of empty space on it.
Right, we're looking at those right now.
Okay, because like in my district, for Okay, because like in my district, for instance, I can think of the sixty-sixth Street Utilities um property. And I remember when I was a kid, my parents were working on with the county at one point, in the back of that property, there's about twenty acres that is pines and Brazilian peppers. And there was talk of turning it into baseball fields. Um, twenty years later, it's still pines and Brazilian peppers. But that's not considered surplus property. It's been sitting there for twenty years.
Right, it has a reverter in it for the state of Florida. The state of Florida gave us that property to use for recreational needs.
Right.
And if we don't use it for the recreational needs, it goes back to the state of Florida. Um, and my understanding is we don't have the money or they haven't decided to build it out yet. And again, I can't.
Twenty, twenty years, right?
Right. So I'm a service department. I don't make decisions. We just pass the information around and collect information.
Sure.
This is what I know about that parcel, uh, because there was some uh, a consideration during Hurricane Irma to try to use it as a debris site, especially looking after Hurricane Irma because there was so much debris created from that storm. Um, we were tasked with looking around the county to find potential debris sites for future storms. That was one of the parcels considered. We actually reached out to the state of Florida and asked if we could change the potential use, and it was not well received from the state of Florida. So we we do continually look at things like that, and I and I am familiar with that parcel.
Sure, okay.
And we are, we are looking at larger parcels that we can um subdivide, if you will. Uh, just this week, we informed Jerry that there is a very large parcel that has a, what do you call that, lift station, uh, has a lift station on it. And, oh, I'm sorry, I did that, Jerry. No, you're right. Um, has a lift station on it, and the lift station only takes up this much of the parcel. So we were, we got the permission from utilities to release the portion, probably two houses can fit on, potentially.
No, that's, that's great.
We are, we are constantly doing that sort of stuff.
Right. And and instead of two separate houses, maybe that's something the board needs to look at. Maybe it'd be better, we could zone it for a triplex, and now we have three houses, right?
That's.
And it becomes more affordable.
Yeah.
Well, you know, you don't want to live next to a lift station that, you know, that's the free market adjusting the cost of the house for you.
Right, lift stations are uh, are kind of throughout the whole, oh, sorry, I forgot to say my name.
Oh.
Joy Leggett Murphy, property acquisition for the record.
Thank you.
Sorry.
And and I, I, that's great information on that piece of property at sixty-sixth Street. And I think maybe that's, that's what I'm looking for, is is some background on some of these justific, you know, why is it that we have this twenty acres sitting here for twenty years of, you know, it's a possum and raccoon breeding ground for generations, right?
Yes.
You know, but that's a better explanation. On the same piece of property at sixty-sixth Street, I spoke with FPL because I'm looking to expand some intersections in my district. Um, and one of them, they have a substation right there. And I start talking to them, hey, you know, we're going to get some property from you and, you know, sort of greasing the wheels on that before we get there. And um, the response I got was, maybe you might be able to help us out because we're looking to build a substation in your district on Cortez Road. And she immediately identified sixty-sixth Street Utilities. And the front of that property between the the ditch and the road is about five acres or four acres that's sitting there. And now, being it's beautiful, don't get me wrong, I'm sure.
The one toward Cortez?
Right, towards Cortez. And they'd love to build a substation, save them a lot of money. They're, you know, but that's another example, one piece of property, right? We have twenty acres in the back, we have like four acres in the front. Um, so, you know, not that I want to put substations all over the place, but I guess it goes to my point that, yes, there are parcels out there. Some of them may be too small. I think those should still be brought to us because, you know, perhaps we're willing to make exceptions in order to get affordable housing, to solve, help solve this problem.
I do want to make two points. The first point is, every parcel I sell, I subtract my hard cost, the cost of advertising and producing it. And then the rest of the money goes into the Affordable Housing Fund. So every parcel my department sells that is not affordable housing designated, the funds go to the Affordable Housing Funds. I don't know what, that sounded redundant.
Sure, no, I understand what you're saying.
But we take the money that we raise from selling, even these little slivers of property, I know it's, it's, you know, they look like they're not worth anything, but they are to the people who live next to them.
Sure.
So even when we sell that, even if we make a thousand, five thousand dollars on it, I subtract out my three hundred dollars for advertising and, because it does cost that much to advertise it in brain to narrow. And then we send the rest of the money to Affordable Housing. So that's the first. Um, I can, actually cannot remember my second point.
That's okay. But with any luck, there's a bill that's going to pass and and you won't have to spend the three hundred dollars every time you want to advertise something in the future.
Right.
And and that's just another thought for the, for you and the board is that, you know, for a debris field, the state may have not been open to um, you know, changing the use of that property at sixty-sixth Street. But if you come to them with an affordable housing project, um, that could be a different story.
I also believe that that parcel has a problem with wetlands and it's very low and marshy. That's one of the reasons why, it's, one of the reasons why they say we couldn't use it for a debris field, but they, it was, they were okay with us turning it into fields, which didn't.
Yeah, I don't know how, ever going to have a field with a wetland in the middle, so.
Yeah, I don't know. It, um.
It does. I mean, if we're looking for problems, we'll find them. But yeah, I'm solution-based, so.
To answer um Commissioner Satcher's question, I'd like to be able to go out into the mymanatee.org, but I'm not really sure how to like get out of this. Can you, can you help me out? Okay. Look at Jerry.
Uh, I I'm not sure how much time we have. It's ten minutes, it's almost ten minutes to.
Okay.
So.
It's just a quick, well, while I'm doing this.
We have a time certain at one thirty.
Um, so this is my, this is my department's webpage on um mymanatee.org. And here we have county-owned property. I have a map that would be very helpful for you, Commissioner um Van Austin Bridge, as well. There is this map right here. It's going to come up eventually elsewhere. And um, it has every county-owned property we have, and there is a short description of its use. And it's color-coded for use. So green is Parks and Natural Resources, blue is Utilities, yellow is Administrative, pink is Neighborhood Services, purple is Rio. So you can go in here, you can zoom around, click on the property, it gives you the information, tells you what the use is, tells why we're keeping it. Okay, so I would like, if it's okay with everybody, to get back to.
No, thank you for that. That's fantastic.
What we would like to work on with Jerry, which I think is a great idea. So we already do have an ordinance fifteen, uh, I'm sorry, fourteen twenty-six that deals with the sale of surplus lands. Oh, sorry. Sure, I just thought with time, I was trying to.
Well, you know, we as a board set policy, and staff follows our policy, and uh, they follow our budget, whatever's we we budget, and that's how this works. Um, projects like you mentioned in Rubonia, and what you heard from Joy, is a lot of the properties you're seeing are potential right-of-way, stormwater, and other uses from other department. And it's not, I mean, just the impression I got with people laughing and smiling was they're hiding something from us. It looks like it's probably on this graph that you've said. Um, why would we sell a property and then have to go and buy a piece of property because we realize we need stormwater or right-of-way? So I do agree, there's got to be some properties on that list that we can get rid of. But I think um, do, me as a commissioner need to look at every piece of property at the large node. The district commissioners should sit down with you. And then, again, it's a board policy that we all decide whether we're going to get rid of this or not, not districts. Um, so what you're doing is fine, but I just got the impression that everybody thinks maybe you're hiding something. You're doing your job to actually save us money in case we have to buy property to do what looks like some of these departments need this for. So that's all I had to say. I just got that impression. I want you to know, I don't think that.
I don't think any of us think that, but anyway.
Thanks.
Commissioner Van Austin Bridge.
Yeah, thank you. I'll make it clear. I I'm not implying that you're hiding anything from me. I'm simply seeking information, Commissioner Whitmore, and I'm sent here by voters, and I'm entitled to have that information so that I can set policy.
And I didn't, it wasn't you, I was directing it to, but thank you.
Thank you.
I never said that. Take a deep breath.
Great.
Sweetheart, thank you.
Thank you. I'm happy to have any conversations you guys want. If you want to meet one-on-one and go through the map with me, we have, you can ask Commissioner Cruz. I think we we have tons of information. Um, I guess you can ask Commissioner Cruz because, I'm sorry, you can ask him right now, but you can't ask him later.
Good job, good job, Joy.
Thank you. All right. So the project that we're proposing to partner with Rio, I think is an exciting opportunity. We already have a statute in play, an ordinance in place, fourteen twenty-six, which designates how we can sell surplus land. One of the ways that's in that statute is called competitive negotiation. Through a competitive negotiation, we can craft a document called a request for proposal, and we can put into that request for proposal parameters for what we want to see the use of the property to be. Um, it's very well outlined in the ordinance exactly, step by step, what happens. Um, once Rio will tell us, we would like this property sold, but we want it to be sold to a for-profit developer who's going to develop affordable housing. Because, as you can see this morning, affordable housing is very complicated, and my department doesn't do that. We're the real estate people. We would rely on Jerry's department to work with us, to craft that request for proposal so that it uh accomplishes what she's asking for it to accomplish. Once the request for proposal is drafted, then we advertise, we hold meetings, we hold site visits, we do all the things you would do in a request for proposal situation. Uh, the county administrator will then appoint a committee to review, I'm on the next page? Yeah. The county administrator will then appoint a committee to review the proposals. Those proposals will be reviewed by that committee. The committee selects a winner. And when I say selects a winner, they look through the proposals, they decide this is the best proposal. They bring it to the county administrator, their county administrator gives it the blessing, and then designate someone to negotiate. That group negotiates with the developer. Um, as um Jerry would point out, a LURA, which I've just learned what LURA stands for today, Land Use Restriction Agreement, uh, will be put in place or will be negotiated as well. That entire package will then finally be brought to the Board of County Commissioners for your approval. So even though we've done all the work and we've, you know, kind of coordinated all of the efforts below, the final approval will remain with the Board of County Commissioners. If you approve the agreement, then you will execute it and we will move forward to closing. So, um, the, by the way, the ordinance requires that any land that is sold through this process has to be a deed restriction, has to have a deed restriction, a land use restriction, a reverter, or a termination. So um, so that way, we ensure that the purpose or the project that we envisioned will happen, will actually happen. And if it doesn't, the land comes back to Manatee County. So that's all of my presentation. If you have any other questions.
Um, I'm, I'm gonna take a stab at this for just a second. Um, I'm, I don't want anyone in this room to think that we felt that you were hiding any property. And and I think that's just a terrible thing to say. What I said and what others agreed with was that the departments had decided really what could be used or not used. I said that simply that should be a decision of this board as a whole. Um, so that's why I ask if you could send the list to all of us. I think that would be appropriate because this board can't make decisions if we don't have all the information at hand either. So I, to me, we should always get all the information. So just to clarify, I didn't want you walking away thinking that anybody was trying to insinuate anything. That is not the case.
I do have a question, if you don't mind, about that process. Um, we send them out, like I said earlier, we've, we've tried all different kinds of attempts to figure out how to do this best so we are most efficient with the process because we are dealing with a lot of parcels. And people actually have other jobs to do. So asking them to review parcels is kind of like an add-on to their job. Um, we send them out right now in groups of three. So we get them back relatively quickly with the suggested uses or proposed uses. So we know what, you know, like I said, we keep it moving through the process. Do you want to see the entire list of seven hundred and sixty-two? Or do you want to see the forty-two that are currently being considered? I mean, that's kind of, I I know I'm just trying to make sure I understand what you want.
Uh, you'll all get it. Thank you.
The, the map on the.
They're picking at me, Joy, just so you know.
I'm sorry. The map on the the website is very helpful, and that's why we put it up there. So we're very transparent about what we own and what we're using it for.
But that, in in all honesty, does that have, if I look on the map, is that going to show me which projects or which land a department might want to save and for what reason?
Yes.
So it is listed on there that.
Yes, the, currently, the ones that are considered to be potential surplus are colored yellow for administrative because they don't have a home.
Okay. You know what? Let us look at it, and we can bring it back up if need be.
We'll do anything you guys want. If you want us to even do it, and I don't want to jump into Jerry's workshop, this is her workshop.
Right.
I feel like I'm hijacking it. Um, but if you would like for us to bring it back at a different workshop just to go through the properties, we can do that as well.
Well, and that might be something in the future that we'll look at.
Okay.
Let us take a look at this and see what we come up with.
See if I have any questions.
Commissioner Servia.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chairman. And thank you, Joy, for an excellent presentation. I really appreciate the professionalism and the the maintenance of the surplus properties that you and your department do. I personally do not want the spreadsheet of seven hundred and sixty-two properties just because I won't look at it. It's not going to be helpful to me. What I'm going to do is go to that interactive map if I have questions and look at my district and see what's available and what's being used. And, you know, and I think that, and and Reggie's saying second for me, because for me, um, that list is going to change rapidly. So what you would give us would be a picture in time, and it's, if I save it for three months, it's no longer going to be useful. And don't print stuff for me. I like it electronic. So, yeah, I can't even imagine a big paper list.
The map has a filter feature.
Okay.
So you can filter just your zip codes.
Okay, yeah, that's perfect. Um, and then I wanted to kind of share an example that I recently had um in trailer estates. So in trailer estates, there's a county-owned piece of property where there's a lift station. And it was a larger piece of property than the county needed. And so the county made an agreement with trailer estates and said, we will allow you to lease the balance of what we don't need of this parcel. So you can do boat and trailer storage there, which is a big need in trailer estates. And so that was a win-win, you know, really benefited trailer estates. It benefits the county from getting a regular annual income from it. Um, and so I I know that you guys are doing those types of arrangements as well. And I really appreciate what you're doing. As as far as the competitive negotiation process, I think it's excellent. Um, I I like exactly what you said, you know, uh, put it together, had, just like we do in other procurement uh processes, bring it to the board for final approval, and I think that that's appropriate. Thank you.
I don't have any other commissioners on the board. Jerry?
So we will continue uh to be working with Joy. We do have an an item that we do need to um uh put in a resolution, the properties that are available for that um that surplus property. Um, so there are some additional ones. So we'll be bringing, uh, we'll be coming back to you on May twenty-fifth with what it is that we do have. Um, just as a resolution that says these are the properties that we have available. Again, as was mentioned, this is just a point in time because this is constant and things may be added. But um per the state statute, we do need to have at least that resolution with those properties. So at least with what's available, you'll come back, uh, we'll come back and you'll see us on May twenty-fifth for that um for that list. But for right now, we'll continue to work with Joy and see if we can identify at least going through uh those, some of the other properties for um to do the RFP. Um, there were two other segments that we wanted to cover. It is noon, so I wanted to see um direction if uh we wanted to uh have uh a different placeholders for these other two segments, either during a report section, during a regular meeting, or or setting up uh another time because this, this isn't, this is, I won't be able to do this quickly.
Commissioner Cruz?
Yeah, I was actually going, waiting for you to pause to ask because community and trust are are very important. And some of this board has seen it numerous times. So that's why you see them popping up all over Manatee County. Um, you know, I I do think it needs to be a standalone to have time to have a discussion. Not standalone if we had time, but it's noon. There are other things that some of us have been holding back to have more of a work session, time and discussion with with all of you present. There's still people in the public that wanted to talk. I wouldn't want you to have to rush through such an important, dense topic just to cram it in. Um, if you feel like you can or should, then by all means, I don't want your work to go to waste. But I'd personally rather do this either as just an agenda item on a a typical regular meeting because it's a single item issue, or at another time where we can give it the proper attention it needs.
Any other comments, commissioners, on this? I think an agenda item would be great.
Yeah, this would, um, that would be great because we do have a a pilot project with the piece of property and several players. So that that will give us the opportunity. so that that will give us the opportunity to invite all the players. So we will able to have that discussion and ask questions of both the nonprofit and the property.
And I will just say, since I read ahead, I know Frank Wells a little bit. I did a whole day seminar on community land trusts at Florida Housing Coalition. He was one of the panelists. You know, I think partnering with Bright, especially in something like this, is a good idea. I kind of read ahead, but yeah.
Great.
All right, I'm going to go ahead and open public comment. I don't have any more cards. Is there anyone from the public to speak? You'll state your name and you'll have three minutes, please.
Glenn Jabelina, for the record, I want to address the water bill right off the bat. You know, you should keep it at the 600 for the majority of the builders. We're talking less than a few hundred. So now you're going to give that break to the big builders. I think you're killing the cash cow. The second thing I want to bring up is livable manatee. You know, they should be asking for $5 million. You know, we've got a down payment assistant program that we help four people or seven people. And then we pay $90,000 to an outfit that teaches folks how to do the down payment, and then they go there and there's no money. So even if you give a million dollars just on the down payment program, it's 28 houses. Out of the 20,000 units, we're short. So they should be asking you for $5 million. The other thing I want to do is surplus property. There are certainly shortcomings from that department, I will tell you. The lift station, two lots, I went out there. They're tearing up the roads. They need those two lots for the next 18 months. Property management didn't know that. So take that off the board. As far as for-profit, we should be thrown in there right with nonprofits. Here's the deal, because what do you think nonprofits do? They hire a contractor to build the land on a nonprofit and they sell it. There's no difference between a for-profit and profit builder. So I say we are all in the mix. You want to, you want to build a house, you build a smaller house, you go in there, and quite frankly, the nonprofit might even hire that developer to build it for them. So at the end of the day, they're selling it for the exact same price except that the nonprofit might take years to get to it like they have in the past rather than get into it and start pulling a permit within 90 days. The lots, listen, I've been asking for five years, real simple question. Give me the number of lots from 3,500 square feet and over. Oh, we don't have that information. What do you mean you don't have it? No, we can't get that for you. The insanity of that department that they don't have that information to the public, that people can go out and take a look at it and say, I want everything from 3,500 to 5,000 square feet. I think I could put in ADU or a less than 1,000 foot's house. You don't have that. You know what they tell me? We've got 768 properties. Go look at them one by one, and I have. I did that five years ago. It took me a few weeks. So that information is very, is very important. I think with all the whistles and bells that you have, it should be readily available. And last thing I'll bring up, there is a Florida statute that states that all surplus property must be reported to the state every three years. 13 years that was invoked by the state statutes, one. Property management submitted one in 13 years. So they violate it the other six times. There's a better way, believe me.
Thank you, Glenn. Anyone else from the public like to come forward? Not seeing anyone. Seth, do we have any phone calls, please?
Yes, Madam Chair, 605-605, please press star six.
Andrew Griffin, Manatee County, for the record. So, problem I have with the surplus property and not providing all of it is the background. Like what was the purpose of those properties prior to? What was, when we purchased those properties, what was those purposes? And as far as, I've been listening to this whole thing for several hours, and I don't think any of you guys have led on that there's something being hidden from you or anything of that nature. I just see that there's three new commissioners and they just want to get a handle on everything and find out what, what all the moving parts is. I mean, I understand it's a little easier for a 14-year county commissioner as opposed to a one-year county commissioner. So I'm not sure if the insults are necessary. With that, I had more to say, but quite frankly, I'm just kind of sidetracked. So I'll let you guys get back to your day.
That's all, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Seth. I'll go ahead and close public comment. We will end this workshop and we'll see you all downstairs at 1:30. Hold on, we do have a comment.
Oh, I thought we were just going to-- There was stuff earlier that we were supposed to be told, don't talk about it. We're going to talk about it later, so I intentionally didn't want to talk about it.
Okay, I'm good with that.
Oh, like I said, earlier I had other stuff to talk about, and I was specifically told to hold off because we're going to talk about it later, and then we're just, we're not talking about it. So I wasn't sure if we were going to just be able--
Yeah, she--
Well, it wasn't about community land trust. Otherwise, it would just be awkward if I start talking about density bonuses during community land trust or dedicated millages or--
No, go ahead.
It seems like it'll be off-topic a little bit.
I would love for you to talk about impact fees because we didn't really get into a--
No, I talked a little bit about it. I was just, all I was going, and I'll kind of keep this brief so people can eat before land use meeting. You know, well, we would talk about some of the projects that are coming up. I heard people kind of cheering and being proud of the fact we have a couple of these, like the Oaks on Steroid 70 coming up. But honestly, the way I see it, and don't take any offense to anyone who's been on this board, it's not intended to, you know, the affordable workforce properties that are coming online today are coming online in spite of this board, not with the assistance of this board. There's not meaningful policy change. You know, you look at all things housing, I'm looking at this package. Here's all things housing presentation 2017, 2018, 2019, 2020, community land trust previous presentation, now all things housing 2020. But we've got a pitifully small livable manatee fund, and finally, after, how long? 10 years? ADUs are finally coming on? And that's about the extent of the meaningful policy that this board has really put forth, that's moved the needle. Now, I know this is a nationwide problem and a statewide problem. It's not just a manatee county problem. So everyone's trying to figure this out in this a lot of ways. But at some point, we need to come up with real, meaningful solutions or something. Otherwise, this is going to be the same thing. We all sit here and talk about it, and next Joe is going to be in all things housing 2022 tab in my packet. And whoever's campaigning next is going to go out and talk about how affordable housing is so important and helping teachers and nurses and police and firemen, and then we're just going to not do anything again. At some point, we need to start discussing, how do we have real, meaningful policy change that moves a needle? And I'm not saying just endlessly throw money at people, although with Sodowsky going down, I would be open, and I've mentioned this before, to taking, not increasing taxes, but taking some of the general funds we get, making a dedicated millage, which can then be leveraged up and, you know, using it towards your own fund, coupled with things like, you know, selling some of the surplus land to for-profit and dumping it in there. You know, there are ways that we can help ourselves instead of just complaining that Sodowsky fund was swept. But, you know, we need to talk about some things, like our LORAs. You know, we need to talk about, you know, loan housing tax credits nowadays. When I was doing, when I was buying and selling those back in the 90s, it was typically like a 10-year affordability. Then it was 15. Now it's like 30, and some people get their applications done with 50. You know, I think we should look at the length that we have for LORAs and make things more affordable for a longer period of time because once they, they stop being affordable, we lose those. They become market. And granted, they're older, so there's some natural affordability to them, but we lose the true affordability nature, and our leverage is on the front end when we're signing that, not on the back end when we're trying to convince them to keep it that way. You know, looking at just some of the optics and education with developers, for instance, you know, we talk about some of these, the density bonuses and so forth, but we call them affordable. But the definition, according to our own comp plan, has a 50% and 80% and 120%. So, you know, I think it may be easier to get some people to help us build some things if we had some flexibility in terms of how we present that. And then the last thing I'll just mention, because I mentioned it during a land use project a couple of weeks ago, and I'll mention again, is I really think we need to have a meaningful look at what our policy is relative to giving people something more than they deserve based on our current land use map. You know, I'm all for somebody saying, hey, you know, this is a future land use R3. Fine, you're allowed to make R3. But anyone walking in here saying, I want this to be R6 now or R9 now, well, there's a trade-off to things. I do loans for a living, and if I tell someone, I'm going to give them a $15 million loan at 7%, and they go, I really need 20 million. Well, if the project makes sense, fine, I'll give you 20 million, but now it's 8%. Now they get to choose. Do they, they take the first, the first offer at 15 at 7%? Or is it worth it to pay the 8% for the more? There's trade-offs in life. You don't just say, give me more of something for free. There's no reason to do it. I've said it before. Sarasota, city of Sarasota screwed up on Rosemary, and they're the first to admit it. They have admitted it because they increased the density in the Rosemary district from 25 units per acre to 75 units per acre just to get development there. Never tied any level of selling off that density, never tied any affordability to that density, and developers flocked in there and built all 1,800, because that was the cap. Up to 1,800 was the density increase. They built them all, zero affordability. They're the most expensive apartments in all of Sarasota. Then they pull back and said, whoa, what were we thinking here? And now, to get that density bonus, you have to have affordability components to it, and people are still building them because now Rosemary is a popular place to build. But they really screwed up, and I don't want to see us continuing to screw up by handing out R6s and R9s and R12s left and right without anything in exchange because there's real value to that, and we should be capturing some of that. Because people don't buy land based on acreage, as much as it's convenient to say, this is X number of dollars per acre when you're buying residential. They buy it based on developable units. That's how every land deal I've ever lent on is calculated. So if somebody bought land based on an R3, now turn it into an R6, that land is more valuable to them, and we should be able to capture some of that. And there's different ways to do it. Number one is just use our density bonuses already in our comp plan that says you can basically go up to the next highest zoning restriction with 25% affordable. It's already in there. We should enforce it, or if we can enforce it because of the language, change the language to make it enforceable. A second way to do this is transferable development rights where that has a couple of benefits to it because someone will have to go out and buy the development rights from a different piece of green space down the road, which allows that farmer who owns the ag land to monetize their land. And then they sell off the developer rights, and that land stays green forever because they no longer have development rights on it. So if someone wants to go from an R3 to an R6 for an extra 200 units, they have to buy 200 units from that other piece of green space, which keeps some level of conservation of green space in Manatee County. And the third way to do it, and Glenn has brought this up, and it's a great way because it's kind of just an alternative to development rights, is let's look into a policy where people can basically buy up their zoning. And, you know, it's like you're either going to build me two affordable units per X number if you want that increase, or you're going to pay for that right to grow. Granted, we still have to approve that it makes sense, that it conforms to the area. But if it does, you know, you can either build me the units or you can pay off building me those units, and then they fall into that same trust fund, whether it's through a millage or something else that we can use to create that affordability elsewhere. Because I get, it's hard to force a for-profit developer to build affordable, single-family homes because to cram them on the lots, you have to make smaller lots, smaller homes makes the less valuable. But that doesn't mean they're not going to say, fine, well, I can either build you 50 affordable housing units to get this density bonus, or I can pay you $20,000 per housing unit to get that same density, and then we can use those funds elsewhere as we're growing a community land trust. There's a lot of policies. I'm not saying which ones are the right ones or the wrong ones, but we need to start having real conversations about meaningful policy change if we're going to make a meaningful difference. Otherwise, we're just going to end up with one house here and one down payment there that's never, ever going to move the needle, especially as we've got the state fighting us by taking potentially $2.5 to $3 million of otherwise usable funds from us.
I would just add one thing that you just said. I've sit here in this workshop all morning, and I've listened to all of you and myself with our thoughts on this workshop. And the bottom line is something that we all need to remember is if you keep doing everything the same, you keep getting the same results. We definitely have a situation on affordable housing, workforce housing, whatever you want, whatever term you want to use. But if we keep doing the same thing that we've done, and I think Commissioner Cruz made some good points, we're going to keep getting the same results. You know, Commissioner Bellamy, I know, I mean, I know where you stand on all this. We are not doing enough. So we need to start getting more information. We need to start asking those hard questions, and then we need to really make use of changing the things we can to get the better results we need. Commissioner Satcher?
Yeah, I wonder if along those lines, like you mentioned Sarasota and their policy, and generally, when we look at things closely, Manatee does a great job. I mean, that's been pretty across the board. We do a great job. And, but I think it might be a good idea to see who, what's working for somebody is because if we haven't cracked the, you know, the nut yet, then let's, let's, they call it best practices. Let's adopt best practices, also known as stealing. So-- But--
Council of Governments meeting.
Okay. But if it's working for, if somebody has figured this out, a way to keep the community vibrant and healthy and have a place for our law enforcement and our veterans to live at a reasonable price, even though, you know, it is what it is. We're also fighting the fact that we live so close to the water, and the water's beautiful. And we're also fighting the fact that our governor is doing an incredible job, and some other governors in other parts of the United States are not. And so some of the people that have the means to move here, they're going to. I don't blame them. But if we can stem the tide or make a difference, sounds, I like it.
And two things I'd like to add to what you just said, and I just saw Commissioner Servia. Number one, I was talking to the county administrator the other day about how this board had said that we wanted to have a strategic planning meeting, and we were going to have it in April. So we still have that to look at. And the other thing is generally, the Board of County Commissioners in Manatee and the Board of County Commissioners in Sarasota, generally, once a year, we all have a meeting together. We've not done that in a while, and I think that it would be a great opportunity for us, and this would be a great topic to discuss. So Commissioner Servia?
Yes, great discussion. Major policy changes is what we're talking about and would require major discussions. You know, I sometimes hear from Glenn Jabelina, you know, how can you approve an increase in the future land use category density without demanding affordable housing? Well, the reason is because our comp plan doesn't require that. That's why. So if we're going to make those changes, they are warrant, we need a discussion on how to do that and if we want to do that and in what way. And I know that George is, I'm going to read his mind. Commissioner Cruz is probably going to say, in order to go up to certain densities in our comp plan that you, that you need to do affordable housing. That's true. But in standard future land use category map amendments, like we're going to see the second part of today, to go from Res 3 to Res 6, you know, there's not something in our code that requires affordable housing. So that's why we're not requiring it because the policy isn't there yet. But I think it's worthy of discussion, and I think it's a big discussion. Thank you.
Commissioner Cruz?
Yeah, that's, I appreciate what you're saying, but I disagree. There's nothing in our comp plan that requires it, but as far as I could tell, there's nothing in our comp plan that requires us to give the R6 either. It's a future land use of R3. And so our future land use map requires us to give them R3 just because our comp plan doesn't require them to build affordable housing. They don't require them to build the other three units on per acre either. We're granting that to them out of the goodness of our heart. So we're allowed to ask for something in exchange for, whether the comp plan says they have to or not, we don't have to approve the increase. And if they go, oh, please, 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 can I have the increase? I'll say, well, then please, 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 build me one house that somebody can live in.
Yeah, so we used to call that back in the day horse trading. And there were a lot of legal policies that changed that don't allow that. So, so I will say this. When we make future land use decisions like that, we have to look at the things required by law. We have to look at the timing and the transitions and the maps and the infrastructure and the population and all of the things that are in the staff reports. That is what we have to look at. As much as I would love to have more affordable housing, we cannot be arbitrarily asking a developer to build a certain amount of affordable housing to get from Res 3 to Res 6. We just can't do it. Our comp plan doesn't allow it. So we can change it, and that is a policy decision, and that's what I'm saying. It's a very big discussion. But as we sit today and this afternoon, you're going to see some of these requests, we can't say, we need more affordable housing. So if you really want to go from Res 3 to Res 6, tell us what you're going to do. And maybe I should defer-- And maybe I should defer to the attorney because this really is more of a legal matter, but just, just my comments. Thank you.
Okay. I'm going to go ahead and close this session out. I think that Commissioner Cruz and Commissioner Servia could definitely debate this issue for the next hour, but we really don't have time. But I would love to see and hear the debate because I would, well, you can't bet. I can't be a betting woman, but if I could. So anyway, we're going to recess and anyone that wants to talk to the county attorney about this, any commissioner can definitely have that conversation with him. So we're going to recess. We'll see you downstairs at 1:30.